Good evening. I'm Mr. Nieto, President of the Wesco ISD Board of Trustees. This public hearing is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice that this public hearing has been posted for at least 72 hours. The time now is 5:37. And I will call this public hearing to order. I will now begin the roll call. Please say "President" when I call your name. Mrs. Jackie Sustaita.
President.
Coach Amanda Coeur.
President.
Coach Eric Serna.
President.
And Mr. Mark Delos Santos.
President.
And myself. Dr. Jaime and Mr. Castillo will be a few minutes late.
Yes, Mr. Roblin.
Good afternoon, first.
Evening. And I'm glad that so many people showed up for our budget workshop, number three. But I don't think they're here for me. But we're gonna try to make it a great 15 minutes of how the district will plan to spend its money next year.
And that's why the last time I said to the parents that were here, of course, for the awards, but they get a little bit of insight on how we spend the money and how we utilize money for students. So it's a good topic. Go ahead.
So we have 10 topics that we're gonna be talking about, and each one's about a slide long. And so how do we end our current year? Now, so we'll go through that. We'll talk about what's happening or what did happen in Austin this past legislative session. House Bill Two is one of the biggest topics that's been related to school finance, so we'll talk about that. An update about our preliminary tax values here at Wesco ISD. Our revenues and expenses, and again, our pending business that we still need to do, but it's planned to take place in August. And so, again, this is just a quick review of how, after all these budget workshops and what's been happening in Austin, what is now finally the outcome. So how do we end this fiscal year? And so for us, it is a July 1 of last year through June 30 of this year. So we're almost finished. We still have a few more days. When we have our external auditors, we will be presenting, if everything goes well, at the November board meeting to finalize what has occurred. And so that's gonna be a great day. As we talk about our initial budget and what is ended as our final budget amendment that's on the agenda, you will see, operational-wise, we are, in a sense, we spent what we had hoped for. Now, during the year, as the superintendent has presented, there was these opportunities to update our facilities, whether it's with our fine arts, our athletics, but more importantly, in our classrooms. So, for instance, those HVAC units at the different campuses. So all that is rolling in into the budget. So, again, we are using fund balance to do those major, kinda like one-time use or one-time payments out of the budget. And so you'll see that we did do a lot this year. And again, we're just improving to the district for the long run. Not small payments that are just a one-year deal that kinda goes away in one year. So these are big capital improvements, which is always a great use of capital fund balance monies. So back on June 4th, that was a big day in the state of Texas, especially for education, because that is when the governor finally signed House Bill Two. So, again, you would have seen a lot of news clippings and news articles and Channel 5, Channel 4, and all the great stations talking about all the pay increases that were budgeted through the state. And in a sense, it trickles down to us as a school district. Again, we always need more. We will always be able to use these funds in a positive way. Again, it's touching a lot of the different areas. Our regular school year or our regular school budget, special ed, early childhood, campus safety, are some of the big areas that saw huge increases to the budget. So how did that look from an $8.5 billion bill that became law? How does that trickle down to us here at Wesco ISD? Again, we have a listing of all the different major funds. And again, these are still preliminary. We still need to pre- this is just a budget, really, as to what increases of revenue that we are anticipating for next year. Now, if we have more attendance in these areas, well, it will become more funds for us to use. But if we plan out everything, like our normal 14,580 or another way of thinking of it, our 16,000 kids who are enrolled in Wesco ISD. By this law, House Bill Two, we are anticipating about $12.3 million more. So don't forget that dollar mouthpiece. I'm gonna pick on that in a little bit.
You said how much? Did I hear right?
$12.3 million more to the budget. But I am gonna ask you to remember that number, because it's gonna play a role later on, so. So one thing that we, I do need to always make sure that the board is aware, is what is the property values here in Wesco ISD? And so when I say Wesco ISD, I'm saying all the properties within the boundaries of the school district. Usually, school districts are bigger than city. So when I say city of Wesco, it's smaller. Wesco ISD is larger. So that's the reason why you will notice that these are not the same numbers when we talk about values. But from last year to this year, and we're now, it's still preliminary. It doesn't become kinda like final until July 31st. $4 billion of taxes, a tax value, is now here at Wesco ISD. And you could kinda see it with all the new businesses, homes, apartments that are happening all around town. We're anticipating about half a billion increase, which is about 15%. So, again, these numbers will be changing, because there is people who apply for those, like a protest. And so we do anticipate these to go down a little bit. How much? We're hoping to find out on July 31st. We will have a meeting in August to finalize those numbers, so that we can then set the tax rates. So where are we getting our monies? In my mind, there's three breakdowns. You have your local funds, which is primarily your property taxes. Your state revenues, it's the money that the state or TEA gives us for educating those 16,000 students who enroll. But we get our funding mostly based on ADA, or average daily attendance. So 14,500 is what we're anticipating, which is very similar to this current year. Our federal revenues, the majority of that is our food service program. So food service is a federal program for our story. And so when you add them all up, we are anticipating for next year, it's gonna be about 200. I had it ready, but I already forgot. Give me one quick second. So for this upcoming school year, when I add up those three numbers, it is gonna be $223 million. And so whenever I talk about our grand total, it is always gonna be about three major funds. Our local funds, our food service fund, and also our debt service fund. So the debt service fund is the one that we use to pay our bonds. So when you add them all up, $223 million. So what were the major increases or changes in our budget? So House Bill Two, you're gonna be hearing that a lot for the next couple of weeks. There is all these new programs that we're now having to implement. And so some of that is also tied to pay raises for our teachers. And we'll talk about that in the next slide. So those are requirements, those we have to do as a school district. But our other allocations, in other words, what we give to the campuses, what we give to the departments, is flat. And so what I mean there is that if last year we gave $100, it's gonna be the same dollar amount for next year. Because in a sense, all major increases is tied to pay raises. We had that meeting last month to talk about our health insurance. And so we are seeing that, again, just to keep up with inflation and how the costs go for medical and pharmacy, we are anticipating a small little increase. And so we're setting aside an extra million for next year. Utility costs, again, because we approved a new energy contract, again, the rates are different. And so just to be on the safe side, we are anticipating an extra cost to the district of about half a million. We still hope for better energy usage, and that would decrease that dollar amount. But just to be conservative and have those funds that are needed, we are seeing that those are the three major increases in spending. But this is probably the slide everyone's gonna be looking at. And so we're talking about pay raises. So the biggest group in the district is our teachers. But for our story, we're also including the counselors, the librarian, and the nurses. And I think, let me make sure. Those that are part of the teaching group, we would follow how the state is kinda recommending on how we're gonna implement House Bill Two. So five years plus of teaching experience, $5,000 in a pay raise. So that is about a 7% increase for those individuals. Teachers that have three to four years, and technically also those with 022, $2,500. Now, the letter A and letter B, it is required by the state. Letter C and the next few items are a local decision, that we are gonna be paying out these type of pay raises. So you may see at some districts, it's more. More likely, you're seeing that it's less than what Wesco is gonna be paying. So for all other professionals, 4% at midpoint. All of our para-professionals or clerks and things of that, 4%. And all of our hourly staff, or we kinda call those like our auxiliary, also at 4% of midpoint. So those are very similar to last year. Paying at a very high level. And so you see that little box on the side. So if I were to add up all those pay raises, one through four, it's about $7 million. Now, one thing that was not paid through TEA, in other words, is coming out of our local extra funds, is benefits. So when you do a pay raise like this, that equates to 7 million, benefits are just on top of that. And right now, we're kinda using a basic formula, 15%, that's a good number. There goes another million dollars. So number five is an item that we're kinda breaking up into two parts. We're talking about the incentive stipend. So last year, we had the one in December, the one in May. The one in December, we do have sufficient funds to make that kind of payment. And so it's already planned for December 25, the $1,000 stipend for the incentive stipend. The May 26 stipend, so right now, that is not part of the budget. But it kinda goes that our budget is a living document, meaning that every month, we could adjust it if we need to. And if we do see that the campuses are doing their best and bringing in the ADA that we need, then the funds that are needed to do that stipend for the second piece, which is $2.5 million, then we have that as a, I'm just gonna call it a pending budget amendment, that hopefully around January, we should be seeing those numbers come in and that we reach those ADA goals. So with that, again, just one piece of the stipend with the pay raises, we are gonna be spending about 10.5. But remember, I was telling you, remember the number from earlier?
12.3.
12.3 is all the new revenues. 10.5 is what we're paying out in just salaries increases, whether it's an increase or through the stipend. So the majority of that money that we are getting from the state through House Bill Two, really, we're gonna utilize that for pay raises. I know it's tiny, but one thought is to show where do we spend the money? So, starting tomorrow, but you do have a print- So, uh, starting tomorrow, but you do have a printout, it's kinda like a budget, uh, workbook. And so if you're wondering, um, where we spend our monies, it's kinda like on the fourth page, and it's gonna, gonna look like this, where you have two lines of purple. One reason why we just show this real quick is to say that forty-nine percent of our money is going into function eleven. That's a great percentage. Long, long time ago, part of our first indicators, it was to get us to that fifty percentile, or fifty percent of our budget for that. Uh, so we're, we're, we're actually getting very close to that, even though it's now longer a requirement. But again, we have about fifteen, seventeen different functions of where we, uh, place our money. But the good thing about Wesaco ISD, that we spend approximately half of our monies for education purposes. So in other words, it's going back to the kids, going back to the teachers, it's going back into instruction. So one of the things that we kinda talked about in August, we will be meeting again to go over the tax workshop, which is the, the, the taxes for our MNO and for our INS. And just remember, um, the home state exemption should be increasing from a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty. So there will be some changes for this upcoming tax year. So again, budget workshop number one. Number two, the public hearing slash, uh, budget workshop number three, we just finished. The next item is gonna be on the eleventh of August, where we finalize our, our tax rates. And so there we go, the, our, our, uh, public hearing for our budget for next year. And in case if you're looking up for that, uh, article that I mentioned, I do show the, where you can find on the website. It's some good reading to talk about all the different changes of House Bill Two.
Yeah. Right up to the, right up to the board. They would do the public. Okay. Thank you. Uh, you can stay there, cause just in case any of the board members have questions. In a few minutes, we'll ask the public if they would, they have any comments. So I'll start with Mrs. Sustaita. Any comments on the presentation on the budget?
Yes, thank you so much. It was very informative. I, I was drawing some notes down as you were presenting, and I don't know if we can go back to one of the very first slides where it was the breakdown, and then you had the twelve point, that one right there.
Okay.
So this is what we're, um, going to put in according to what we have, right, to each department? You mentioned how there was a flat rate for each department. Let's say, um, career and technology allotment, I'm looking at it, I'm just picking it, five hundred and thirty-two thousand. So whatever we gave, let's say, um, the department for welding at CTE, we have a flat rate what we gave them, but we're gonna give them, that's a whole department, on top of what we gave them last year, we're going to give them this much more?
That is right.
Okay.
So let me just kinda go into a little more story. So if it's a department, for instance, maintenance, if we gave them a hundred dollars, next year, it's a hundred dollars. We're, we're not gonna be making major changes. Now, when we talk about the allotments, for instance, Kate or CTE, um, if everything stayed the same, meaning the same number of kids who are taking the same type of classes, we are anticipating that they're gonna earn five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars more. And so, um, so there is a one more step that we, we do share that cost. So they spend fifty-five percent, the district keeps forty-five to do its side of the business. But they will see that as an increase to their allotment.
Based on the numbers that enroll. And the reason why I bring specifically this one up is because I've had parents ask me, my son or my daughter wanted to be at this program, but there weren't any teachers that, that, so they didn't enroll. Or, you know, they, they weren't able, they weren't accepted into the program. So I wanna make sure that we're giving every child the opportunity who wants to be part of these programs. But if you don't have enough teachers, well then, how are we gonna get those numbers in? So that's why I wanna make sure, do we have the money there so we can give these students the opportunities, so we can have the teachers? When will that, you know, how, how will we know, or how soon will we know that?
So we always go with estimates, so that's always gonna be how our budget is set up. And so if we budgeted so many students taking a CTE course, I could go into way more details, and I know Ms. Gomez could even go further. It really goes back to the class master schedule.
Okay.
Meaning, these are all the classes that we're offering for that program. The idea is that we need to get those filled up, and then if they, we do see a need for additional very specific teachers, then that's gonna be the plan to say, is that something that we're gonna ta, start in the next semester? Or is it that this program's growing so much that we need to really ramp it up for the following school year?
And maybe this is a question for, for curriculum, but we should have the numbers now during summer, right, for the kids who are enrolled for this next school year, or is that yet to happen, uh, for the next school year?
Mr. Regula?
Do we already have a number?
Yes.
Okay.
We have the numbers already.
Okay.
We have an idea of what we need for next year, for the new year.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, that was my question. Thank you.
Good question. Dr. Hagman?
No. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Coach Quay?
Thank you fully.
Mr. Ben Castillo?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Oglado, on this same, uh, uh, slide, what, on the other programs, what's, what is that?
The majority of it is our bilingual program, but it also includes our GT and some other smaller ones. What I can do, I can get the full breakout, it's about four or five other programs, but they're kinda small.
And, and, and the reason I ask is because, you know, we've been kinda dealing with, ah, with, with, uh, high enrollment at some of our campuses. And, you know, one, one, one thought that, that I know a couple of trustees have had, uh, is what if we add an extra administrator to that campus? I mean, what does that look like money-wise? What, I don't know, I don't know how the board feels, but what, I guess, what does that look like on your end to have that extra support at the campus level to make sure that those campuses with those, with, with high enrollment, uh, that they're supported?
So my first thought is always that we would go back to the compensation plan, because we have our, kinda like our campus ratios, so I'm gonna kinda give you an example. For every, and this is an example, it's not for, uh, an accurate one. If it was for every five hundred kids, you get one counselor. So once you hit five hundred and one or more, technically, that's when we start thinking, okay, can this campus support a second counselor? Uh, I know that's also deals a lot with, uh, um, with the assistant principals. For every two fifty, you get another one, or something to that effect.
So that's kinda, that's kinda where I was going on the assistant principal side, not necessarily the counselor.
Yeah, no, no, just to.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And so we always go back to what are those ratios for elementary, because they have their own special needs, uh, middle school and high school. So each group would have their own, kinda like their, um, their makeup as to how or how many administrators, clerks, and things of that nature would be. So we would normally go back to the compensation plan to see how that would be. Because once you go over and go above and beyond, um, again, depending on if it's an administrator or a para-professional, we would then just have to kinda figure out, uh, what the cost is for that.
Yeah, I mean, kinda speaking for myself, I statement, right? For those high kind of, uh, enrollment campuses, uh, I'd like to see what it would look like as far as adding another assistant principal. I guess because, uh, and I'm not talking about Wesaco ISD specifically, but I go to board meetings all the time, right? And so the, one of the biggest gripes are, uh, that we have counselors doing more administrative work than counseling. And I know we have that statute that prohibits, but.
Yeah.
I make that face because you know what I mean, that, uh, and so if it's possible, maybe to look at adding extra, uh, uh, an AP or support at those campuses, I think that would be beneficial to our students.
And I, I think Dr. Iveda, in discussing with him on that, uh, has mentioned that once we get the pre-reservation figures and see if a campus says two hundred more students, then he'll look at that. Normally, he does that at the beginning of every year, depending on, especially the big schools that you're talking.
Yes.
Uh, depending on, on the ratio, and then he'll say, you know what, this campus needs another counselor, or this campus needs another assistant principal, or needs another attendance clerk or something in the front office, correct?
That's correct.
You know, so.
There's, there's a formula, the more kids you have, the more staff you have. Assistant principals, counselors, secretaries. So we'll put that on the update.
Yes.
And maybe that formula can be changed a little more to add more people to it.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't mind, Dr. Just if you keep, keep us informed on that one.
Let's, let's do an update. HR personnel, on the formulas we have right now.
Good question.
How many, how many counselors?
There are regional formulas.
I think there are, then we develop your taskby, the formulas that we have.
Mr. Yetl, if I may, just to add to Mr. Castillo, this is my I statement. Being an elementary teacher, the, the support that the teachers need, the, the smaller a classroom size, thus, the better I can work with my students. So let's also look at the, the teacher to student ratio in a classroom. Cause yes, you can give me another assistant principal, you can give me a counselor, but the main, the trenches, it's in the classroom. And sometimes the teachers have too many kids in the class, and that makes it really, really difficult. Even if I have an extra assistant principal on my campus or a counselor, if you really wanna see the change, it has to be in the classroom. So we, we need to make sure that we're looking at the teacher to student ratio also.
Can I jump in on this one too? I wanna piggyback off this Sustaita with the teachers.
She's absolutely right. We do need to look at the, that ratio. Because the reality is, is the development in Wesaco, it's, it's really heavy on the south, and it's in multifamily residential, uh, units. So you're, you're meeting, instead of having a traditional family on one lot, you're gonna have four full families. So instead of just having two to three students come to WISD, each lot's gonna have at least an average of eight to twelve. And you're gonna overwhelm that side. So now that we're talking about future projects and also surplus, like those additional teachers that may be needed also need classrooms.
Yes.
And so expansion and wings is something that I think we also need to look at as well too, because we've been hearing that a lot from the community, and especially those schools that are overwhelmed, like Margot and Memorial and whatnot. It's unfortunate, I would love to say, well, you're just gonna tell those parents to drive all the way across town, that's not a reality. So like, if we could, I know we've talked about it before, but we can continue to look at that, because you have a lot of development on the south side. Thank you, Mr. Los Santos.
So we could look at both?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and, again, that one, Dr. Iveda has also, we discussed it actually at the planning meeting on, on that particular, uh, the numbers per teacher. You know, to have them lower, you know, if we, if we have the budget to be able to have, especially in the lower grades, cause that's when they need the most help. Good point. Okay?
I'm good.
You good? Coach Sharna?
Just echo what Mrs. Sustaita said, echo what Ben said, and echo what Mark said.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Good. Uh, Mr. Los Santos?
Yes, I just have, uh, just a few questions. One, the first one is gonna be a statement though, and I'm gonna, just to do a plug right here. I know you talked about the teachers, and you talked about the raises that are coming up, especially the state required ones. And yeah, if you go back to that page, you may see some districts different, but the reality is when we, last time we did the taskby study, we have, we have, in the, in the educational field, you have your, your, uh, how would you say, your, your young, well, well, let me just say, your low, your mid, and your high. So your mid-range teachers are those ten plus and twenty less, less than twenty, that's kinda that range. And so that's what we have in Wesaco ISD, a lot of veteran, uh, teachers that, that are, that are very good at what they do. But they're also, according to the taskby studies, wanna make that plug. Even though some district may be paying a little bit more, our teachers are the, one of the highest paid, or the highest, I think, last time we checked, the highest paid teachers in the real world.
They are the highest right now.
So I just wanted to plug that real quick. Uh, the second one was the HB two funding slide. Now, I just wanna confirm, because this funding, I know that in the other slide, when we talked about pay increases, and we talked about the salary increases, and then the potential increase on the district. We looked at, we're looking at about twelve million, right? Now, you, uh, ten million, I'm sorry, this one has twelve point three, just using rough numbers. But is all that money allotted for funding, or is that for specific initiatives?
Both.
Both. So, so my question would be, and it's not like I gotcha, but I just, that's one of the areas I like to focus on. How much is actually available for staffing? Cause I, I don't want the public to think, well, we got twelve, so we're gonna, we're gonna increase ten, we got twelve, and we're gonna have a two million dollar surplus. But some of this money is specific for initiatives, right, like resources and things.
So like the first one, the three point nine million?
Right.
Again, it's for the teacher pay raise. But it's not for all of them, it's only for the first two batches. The, what they're calling the ABC allotment for basic cost, that is gonna be to help the district, again, pay for basic costs. It would've been for like our insurances. We tend to see that, that's probably gonna go to pay raises also. So as a local decision, those two are now part of it. The regular allotment, that's local funds, again, that's going to pay raises. The support staff retention allotment is for those others, the librarians and, uh, nurses, who is part of the teacher, uh, pay group, that half a million is for salary raises. So the majority of these, we are gonna allocate locally, uh, to, to pay raises.
So it's kind of like in ESRA, like what you did ESRA years back. We're gonna swap out state and local, so we can, we can save that money, use ESRA funds then to build up the, the general fund.
So the majority of these are like that.
Yeah, you're gonna flip.
The one I do wanna pick on, special education evaluations. So you would've heard, by us doing an evaluation, we are gonna receive, I believe, a thousand dollars. We are anticipating to do about four hundred and thirty-eight evaluations next year. So that is to help offset that particular cost.
Right.
And so, um, the early childhood allotment, again, those are for those pre-K three, pre-K four teachers, that they would have only funded us half the money, now it's a full-time deal. So it's money that we were paying out of our, um, federal programs department. Well, now, we're gonna be able to, in a sense, save that money for other projects. They may use it for pay raises. So it's kinda like, it's just happening for us that the majority of the monies that we are getting is going back to pay raises.
Okay.
If we didn't do a pay raise, which I know I'm not recommending, then that money could've been used for something else.
Well, thank you.
So the, the whole idea is, you have a, a pizza pie, two hundred and twenty-three million. We are just the cutters, who gets the slices? So when I hear, oh, let's hire more staff, then that pizza slice is getting bigger, but I need to cut from something else. And normally, for us, seventy-five percent, and now it's actually like about closer to seventy-eight percent of our dollars go to pay raise, or go to salaries already. So, um, yeah, we call it, a lot of our money is allocated to those fixed costs. So those are the things I kinda, we need to watch out in the future.
Sorry, uh, for House Bill Two, you know how we have a piece of, piece of pie? If, let's say, I wanna take from this piece of the pie, and I'm seeing a need at this other piece of the pie, that's kinda like supplanting money, right? That is not misappropriating funds?
No.
Or how does that work to make sure that we're in compliance with not misappropriating funds?
So whatever the allocation is for, so I'm gonna pick on early, early education allotment. We, the first question is, can this cost, is it allowable for that allocation or that allotment? So if I'm gonna put a pre-K three teacher now being funded out of the early education allotment, yes, that is a, a cost that is allowable. You wouldn't put a high school teacher in the early childhood, because again, it's not a pre-K three.
That would be misappropriating. If I'm a special ed teacher and I'm getting paid with, uh, early education allotment, that is misappropriating funds, right?
Yeah, so we would have to go back to the rules. So you have, in federal programs, you have that allot, the, and I'm gonna call it at-risk kids. Those at-risk kids can be in multiple buckets of people, funding sources wise. So if, um, if that at-risk child is a bilingual or an, um, I guess, called ED student, well then, they could help them in that. But then they could also get funded from state comp, because they are at risk or economic disadvantaged. So again, it goes back to, we have some, we have grade directors who keep us all in check.
You guys are in charge of that, and you're on top of it, okay.
My second part of the question.
Hold on. Second part of the question is, how long, how long are we gonna get the allotment? Because once you get, you, once you put, put that increase in there, now who's gonna pay it? Is it like, it's gonna continue on? Because our staff is gonna stay here, salary increases are gonna stay. But after that allotment goes away, will the district be able to sustain with its enrollment and ADA? So that's my question. Is this permanent, or is this, is this just like a one-year, one, one or two-year type of event?
House Bill Two is a two-year deal. Now, we are anticipating that once these two years, so again, the very first one, four million dollars is being paid for our middle group and our, uh, long-term teachers. Next year, it's gonna be about that same amount. What they're gonna do is that through the PMS department, they're gonna ask, how many teachers do you have? And if we say one thousand teachers, seven hundred of them, or more closer to eight hundred, are considered in that group, they will update that funding through that.
For two years.
For this year.
And next year.
And the '26, '27 school year. They are going to give us, in a sense, that flat amount.
Okay. But no guarantee on future allotments? That's kind of, that's what I'm kind of trying to get to. Yeah, that's what we do our workshops. We're careful on hiring, et cetera, and whatnot, and we set limitations on ourselves, so that we don't overextend. Right. Right.
So they're giving us money, the $5,000 for each year.
Right.
Let's say it like that.
But they won't get $5,000 next year. The money will be to sustain that amount.
It would be sustained.
Sustained.
So it does not talk about, oh, I want to get $5,000 and an extra $5,000.
Next year, no.
Next year, no.
They're not giving us that kind of money.
They're sustaining only what we implemented. And then after that, they're going to continue to sustain it after that.
More likely, because you can't, it's very hard to give, to reduce salaries.
Right. That's what I just wanted to get to.
But it is a weird thing that the state is now doing. In the past, you would have just seen it through the basic allotment. And then we then fund it locally. Now you're seeing, there's this allotment, there's that allotment. So that's kind of like the working of the senate, where they like to do it like that. Where I tell you, Weslaco ISD, I'm going to tell you, you have $4 million for teacher raises, and I, me being the senate, or now the Texas legislature, saying, that's where I want you to spend it. In other words, you're putting strings attached to it.
Good, sir.
Good questions.
Mr. Nieto, one more thing?
Go ahead.
The TASB study was mentioned. How often do we go for that? Do we have TASB analyze our numbers?
It's ongoing?
Yeah.
So it is a yearly maintenance review. So there is like a full-blown, like where we go deep dive.
Right.
And then there's, what we have been doing for the past two years is more of a maintenance. Let's maintain it, let's make sure that our paid groups, that we have them in the right areas, the different jobs that flow through. So luckily, TASB's been with, doing that for the past, I don't want to say three years, but these past two are like the maintenance version of it.
And we ask them for recommendations, or?
Yes.
Good question. Will you go to the, back to the teacher raises? Okay, so clarify. Counsel, including with the teachers, the counselors, librarians, and nurses will be getting also that $5,000, $2,500? Yes?
Let me make sure.
Is that what?
Counselors are part of their own group, right? Okay.
So they're not with that group, because they're going to get the 4%, correct?
The 4%, yes.
Oh, so not part of the teacher group. That's what I understood on the slide.
Well, see, that's why, that's why I'm asking, because it says, yeah, it's a parenthesis.
Includes counselors.
So counselors are, they have their own paid group, so they would follow the 4%. So I need to, I need to change that.
That's incorrect, then.
Yeah, it shouldn't have been there, the counselor. They shouldn't have been there, because they're part of the 4%.
Yes.
Okay. Question number two. The zero to two years of experience, is that coming from a local budget? Or is it coming from the legislative budget that we receive? Because we don't have a lot of zero to two years of teachers that are experienced. We have, you know what, maybe in the next update, you can let us know how many. Less than 200. We know the figure already, no? 176?
Approximately.
So that particular money, is that coming from the state, or is it coming from our local, $2,500?
So.
Not from the state. The state is only A and B. Correct. So C, we made that determination.
Yeah.
And 25, other districts are going $1,000 or even less. That's what I was going to say. So teachers that are listening or understand that other districts are only giving $1,000 or $1,500 at the most. You know, some of the big districts is for teachers zero to two years of experience. And we're giving $2,500.
And the incentive stipend.
And that's my next question, okay? So clarification of the stipend. The first semester is $1,000, correct? But does that include all staff members? Yes, everyone in the district. Across the board. Very professionals?
The full-time.
Security guards? Yes, everyone. Okay. So they, that way, they can understand that. Because a lot of. $1,000. Yeah, because that's, a lot of times they ask those questions. The second part is a reminder to everybody that just because we put $1,000 for the spring, doesn't mean they're going to receive $1,000, unless our ADA, we meet the ADA for high schools '95, elementaries '96, and middle schools '96, whatever. Yes. Right? So that way, principals, teachers. Contingent on the enrollment, the ADA. Okay. Because a lot of times you'll say, well, you all mentioned it was $1,000. But it all depends on our ADA, correct? And a lot of times, people don't understand average daily attendance. The students that come to school by second period, and is counted present for that day. Or if they went to the doctor's and come back, they're counted present, you know, when they come back. So those are very, parents need to understand that, because that helps in the long run on monies that we need, correct? Yes. And let's see, those were my three questions.
Just real quick, you just reminded me, I had several teachers call me and ask me, and I know I asked Dr. Rivera. The teachers, some of the teachers wanted to know, is there going to be a percentage withheld out of this $5,000, kind of like Tia? Are they going to withhold, you know, a certain percentage, or do I get the full $5,000? And the answer is, they get it all. No percentage is being withheld.
Well, you still take out taxes for your federal.
Other than taxes, but I mean like the service and all this other stuff that the school district.
So Tia is like that. This is not Tia. This is, would be like a normal pay raise.
Okay.
Good question. Just for, for talk, there's workshops, and I know people want to get to the awards. But we also have, is the homestead, in other words, what I'm trying to do is prepare for the future, right? So I don't want to overwhelm and take off. It may not be something everyone wants to hear, but then we get into a situation later where then we can't sustain it, right? And then you've got to make hard decisions, like all these other districts are right now. So also, when it comes down to our taxes, I'm glad it's back on this slide. If we can look at, when we have the compression on the tax rates, we have the lowest tax rate in the valley compared to any school, any school district. Even, there's only one small one that beats us, but I'm talking about 4A, 5A, 6A. But my thing is here is that, one, looking at the tax rates, we're looking at increasing INS only for future boards, when there's needs, if that's a possibility even. And two, is there going to be a homestead reduction? Because I know it went up to 100, and they were saying there was going to be another $40,000 in the future.
140.
Yeah, so it may not hurt now, but in two, three years, it may hurt when it kicks in, and then we see that we have a major loss of revenue, but yet we're running out of high overheads.
The state's holding us harmless.
Okay, oh, okay.
Exactly. So if we lost, and I'm just going to throw out a number, $2 to $3 million, the state will come in and give us that $2 to $3 million. So we are going to be held at hold harmless.
Okay.
Now, again, you hope people pay, because now it's a smaller tax bill. So you're hoping on that side.
Yeah.
And so, but the tax relief is going to be hold harmless for us.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good presentation.
All right, good questions there. And of course, the people that are present, maybe you understand the budget now a little bit more, you know? Okay, let's go to number four, public comments on proposed '25, '26 budget. If anybody in the audience want to make any comments, as a parent, as a staff member, whatever, you can. Not that we ever have anybody, you know, say something, but one of these. Very true. All right, so any public comments on the budget? Once, going once, going twice. Nobody? All right. I guess you did a good job. Very good, thank you. It's a, it's a good budget. It's a good budget. And thank you, Dr. Rivera, for you and your staff working on the budget. A German. All right, so are we ready for the? We're ready to go?
Yes.
All right, that's what the parents have been waiting for. Ready, Carlos?
Yes.
I'm Mr. Nieto, president of Weslaco ISD Board of Trustees. The regular board meeting is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Notice that this meeting has been posted with 72 hours. The time now is 6:22, and I call this meeting to order. I will now begin the roll call. Please stay here or present when I call your name. Mrs. Staita?
Present.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez?
Present.
Coach Armando Coe?
Present.
Mr. Ben Castillo?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Eddie Serna?
Present.
And Mr. Mark De Los Santos?
Present.
And myself, Mr. Nieto, present. We have a quorum here today, a full quorum, actually. Number three, invocation, Dr. Rivera.
Let's bow our heads and let us pray. Gentlemen, if you would be so kind, remove your hats in reverence to the Lord. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, our Lord Jesus Christ, we come before your throne of glory to honor, praise, and glorify you. Who is like unto you, you are awesome in all of your ways. There is no shadow of turning in you. You are eternal light and never change. Thank you for the gift of life, health, family, friends, strength, peace, and physical ability to work, to provide for our families. Thank you for your faithfulness and protection over the lives of our students, staff, and families. We thank you for the blessing of gathering once again as a corporate body, and the privilege to serve this most beautiful community of Weslaco. We ask you to continue to bless and grant greater wisdom to our superintendent, Dr. Richard Rivera, and our board. You have called us to serve others through the gifts we have received from you. May your will be done in our board meetings. Help us always to maintain integrity in what you have left in our care. Our decisions have lasting impact in our boys and girls. As the '24, '25 school year has come to a close, grant us greater wisdom to make '25, '26 WISD's greatest year. We pray your hand of blessing and protection be upon all our students and staff during the summer, so that all may return safely in August. We ask you all this in your precious, glorious, and mighty name of Jesus, and everyone says, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Pledge of allegiance, Dr. Rivera?
Ah, yes. Mr. Benemer.
Good evening. We'd ask everyone to please stand, remove their caps and hats, place their right hand over their heart, and face the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd ask everyone to please remain standing, turn towards the Texas flag with your right hand over your heart. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Benemer. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Rivera.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, Dr. Rivera, and members of the board. We have a lot of student groups, a lot of parents here this evening. And we want to start off by recognizing our CTE, state and national qualifiers. So let's give them a round of applause as they enter the room. We want to congratulate our career and technical education students who competed at the state and national levels of Business Professionals of America Conference. These students placed in the top 10 in different events. BPA sponsors are Isabel Valdez and Daniel Zuniga. Let's give them a round of applause. We also have several members of the Family, Career, and Community Leaders FCC LA organization, and they will represent Weslaco High School at a national conference coming up in a few weeks in Orlando, Florida. State champions Cora Ford and Charlotte Sander, along with Antonia Gonzalez and Darlene Garza, will be honored as the 2025 Community Service High School winners for National Programs in Action Project. FCC LA sponsors are Mary Martin, Maria Martinez, and Dana Villarreal. How about a big hand? We also want to recognize their parents. Parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? All right, we'll take a photo. And once again, congratulations to our students. All right. Up next, we have an individual that we would like to recognize with a big trophy right there. Tonight, we want to congratulate our district's top elementary reader. She read about 4 million words as part of the Accelerated Reader Program, representing North Bridge Elementary. How about a big hand for Dakota Casades? We would also like to recognize her parents. Parents, can you please stand and be recognized? All right, quick photo? All right. All right. Once again, congratulations, Dakota. Okay, we have some little ones here. How about a big hand for them as they enter the room? We get them set up here. We have some art students who are with us here this evening. Tonight, we want to congratulate our talented elementary school artists who recently competed in the Texas Education Arts Meet, hosted by the Texas Art Education Association. These students won exemplary ratings for their original artwork. Students used all mediums for their creations and also analyzed their entries. Also, several students received top team distinctions. We'd also like to recognize their students. Art teacher from Silva Elementary, Natalie White. From Ibada Elementary, Cynthia Duran. From Rico Elementary, Belinda Reyes. And from Sam Houston Elementary, Esmeralda Tijerina. Once again, congratulations to all our students on a fine job. And real quick, parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? Parents? All right. Thank you very much, students. Good job. One more round of applause as they leave the room. All right, tonight, we want to congratulate a very talented artist. It's the second year in a row we have recognized her. This Weslaco High School student received a back-to-back gold seal ratings at the UIL Visual Arts Scholastic Event recently. How about a big hand for Valeria Galindo? We'd also like to recognize her parents or relatives, if they're here. Can they please stand and be recognized? Congratulations, Miss Galindo. All right, now we have members of our band, our high school band. How about a big round of applause as they enter the room? We have a long list of students. You can see their names on the screen right here. We do have some of our students who are here with us as well. But tonight, we want to congratulate several members of our high school band who recently returned from the UIL State Solo and Ensemble Competition. Several of these state qualifiers. Several of these state qualifiers also won gold and silver medals. We would like to recognize our students from Weslaco East, from Weslaco High School. How about a round of applause? And we'd like to recognize their band director, Mr. Rodrigo Lial. And if their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? All right, we'll take a photo. I do want to, can I, many real quick, I do want to recognize one person from Weslaco High School. A special noted distinction for Juan Tijerina. Of approximately 100,000 students participating in the UIL contest, only 2% to 3% of the solo performances are recognized as outstanding performers, so congratulations to Juan for All right, congratulations. And now, we have members of the Wildcat Regiment. We want to congratulate several members of the Wildcat Regiment who recently returned from the UIL State Solo and Ensemble Competition. Several of these state qualifiers also won gold and silver medals. So we want to say congratulations to the Weslacoese High School Wildcat Regiment. And we also want to congratulate their band director, Mr. Armando Cuellar. And parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? All right, we'll take a quick photo. Thank you very much and congratulations. Got a few more recognitions. Lot of success here as we closed out the year. How about a big hand for some choir students now entering the room? With us tonight, celebrating several choir and orchestra members representing Weslaco East High School and Weslaco High School. These choir and orchestra students advanced and competed at the UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest, some bringing home gold and silver medals. How about a big hand for these students? The Weslacoese High School Choir Director is Dominic Saavedra. Big hand for Dominic? Right here? Thank you, Jenny. For Weslaco High School Choir Director Denise Martinez. And the Orchestra Director is Dr. Young Sing Choi. We'd also like to recognize their parents. Parents, can you please stand and be recognized? Two students, all right. All right, up next, we want to congratulate our high school mariachi groups. How about a round of applause for them as they're here? We want to congratulate our high school mariachi groups for their tremendous success this year. The Weslacoese High School Mariachi Tequani and Weslaco High School Mariachi Pantera both qualified for the State Texas Association Mariachi Educators Contest. How about a round of applause? Mariachi Tequani finished fourth at state, making the program a top 10 5A marching program in the state of Texas. Round of applause. We would like to recognize mariachi director Pierre Sustaita with advisor Mario Federer. We'd also like to recognize mariachi pantera, who also received fourth place at state ranking them in the top 5 6A marching program in the state of Texas. Mariachi director? Mariachi director is Jose Samora with advisor Mario Federer. Round of applause, please. Let's also recognize their parents. Parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? All right. Time for a photo? All right, now we'll recognize, how about a round of applause for our next students from Weslaco East High School? We have some exciting news to share with you and recognize these students as well. Valley College Football is about to kick off this August, and three Weslacoese High School graduates will be cheering on the Vaqueros as part of the UT RGV Drill Team. We want to congratulate these Weslacoese High School students who will soon be making history on the football field. We also want to congratulate their sponsor, Adalia Castillo. Congratulations, ma'am. And parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? Parents? Anybody? They drove themselves. Well, we have one more recognition. If y'all have some time, yes? Tonight, we want to make a special announcement. The Weslaco ISD Fine Arts Program has been honored with the 2025 Best Communities for Music Educators designation from the NAMM Foundation. This is the eighth consecutive year for the award. And I know there's someone here too that we're going to recognize, and he's coming in here in a few minutes. Still taking care of business outside, but I'll go ahead and start. We have always, we have always been known that Weslaco ISD is second to none. Students have been developing their music abilities since elementary, elementary through middle school and high school under the guidance of devoted fine arts teachers and fine arts programs, as evident tonight with the many of our fine arts students excelling at the state level. This includes choir, orchestra, band, jazz band, mariachi, and conjunto. Tonight, we honor Fine Arts Director Christopher Fernandez and his talented group of educators for this special recognition. And that concludes our awards and recognitions. Thank you.
Carlos? And congratulations, Mr. Fernandez. All right, we go to item number six, public comments. Carlos?
There are none today.
All right. We will continue. Number seven, superintendent's report. Dr. Rivera?
Yes. On, I have 20 slides. On page one, this is the ISD core values. Everything, everything depends, comes together for student outcomes. We have the budget, HR, summer school, professional development, and then the outcomes, everything, everything with Lone Star, it comes back to the core values that we use at Weslaco ISD. On page two, I'm going to show you the enrollment compared to last year for the first week of school, the end of the first semester, and then the second week in May. As you can see, the first week comparing last year and this year, we were at minus 219 when we started. At the first semester, a minus 61. The second week in May, a minus 98. So there are factors that are, that affect enrollment. And then, so I got A, B, C, D, and E. The first one is virtual schools. This is gaining momentum. And what this is again, I just, I described this before, is that students that live in one district attend school in another district, and that district gets the ADA. So that's gaining momentum. We're looking at rezoning. We're looking to see the vouchers. The school choice begins August of 2026. We're looking at new subdivisions, the growth. And as you can see on E, for the last three years, there's been a declining enrollment, again, for different, for different factors. In '23, around the same time, there were 16,503. Last year, 16,310. And this year, we finished the year at 16,212. So as we reduce enrollment, we have to be constantly looking at our staff. So as you, as you reduce enrollment, we have to reduce staff. One thing we cannot do is being overstaffed, because then at the end of the year, we have to reduce staff. So I am concerned about the enrollment. So again, as you can see, and hopefully for next year, the enrollment will go up. So I will keep you posted on the enrollment for 20, for 25-26. On page three, this is the yearly, the yearly ADA. And for the, for the high schools, the goal that we have is 94%. That's the goal that we have for the year. As you can see, only South Palm Gardens attained that goal, 97.3. Weslaco High was next. Again, the goal, 94. Weslaco High, 91.7. Weslaco East, 91.3. So the total loss to the district that we would have gained this amount was almost $1 million. So again, the goal is for this coming year to increase, to increase the ADA, because by doing this, it increases the revenue. On page four, I did the same thing for the middle schools. The only, the only school that attained the goal of 95 was Central at 95.2. Big Garza was next at 94.1. Armando Cuellar, 93.7. Mary Hope, 93.5. And again, the goal was 95%. So by not reaching the goal of 95%, we would have, we would have received an additional $255,000, which we're not going to get. On page five, these, these are the elementaries. The goal here is 96. So you can see that three schools reached this goal. Kleckler Health, 97.9. Again, the goal being 96. Margot, 96.3. Memorial, 96.2 attained the 96 goal. The other schools in order, Justice Gonzalez, 95.8. Sam Houston, 95.7. Tony Rico, 95.3. Rudy Silva, 95.0. Ibarra, 94.7. North Bridge, 94.5. Then Airport, 94.2. So by not getting the 96, we're not going to receive the additional $400,000. So the goal for this coming year is to work harder with this, because monies are going to be very scarce for '26, '27. The only new monies coming in is going to be for the, for the ADA. On page six, in '23, '24, the budget was set, that was my first year here, the budget was set at $14,000. We were higher, the ADA, 14,522. So we received additional monies that year. For '24, '25, the goal was $14,500. We didn't get that. The estimated, it might be a little bit higher, was 14,450. So by being 50 students short, we're going to be, we're going to have to, they're going to deduct, TA will deduct about $400,000. So that's, that's a big loss to the district. And for '26, we're going to budget again conservative at 14,5. Now, the reasons we didn't meet the 14,5 was again, campuses did not meet the standard, and again, we're losing enrollment for the last, for the last two years. So these are factors. But again, the goal for this coming year is to hit the 14,5. This is why it's very important, and I work with the principals every week to make sure they reach their standard. So now, we're looking at the monies that we would have received that we're not going to receive. On page seven, I'm very proud of this, this slide here. Then we talked earlier during the workshop, that Weslaco ISD ranks among the highest, and we're comparing some districts from the highest to the lowest at zero years, five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So Weslaco, Weslaco ISD is higher in the five years, 10, 15, and 20. At the zero years, we're a little bit lower, and you can see that FAR is, was the highest is for '24, '25. For the new year, we're going to increase the, the first year by $1,000, which now will be 58, and then with a, with a stipend, it'd be $59,000. But we know that all of these districts are going to increase their amount. So I will share with the board later on how we compare at the different, at the different years with, with the region, one schools. These are the big schools. Some of the schools that are, that are lower enrollment are a lot less than Harlingen ISD, for example. So again, our goal, we want to pay our teachers well, pay them well, so they can go ahead and, and do a good job, do a good job in the classroom. On page eight, this is, this is a slide that I show you often. This is, this is the fund balance. This is not part of the budget. This is monies that we have in savings that we had in different years with the increased ADA, and we did not spend all the money every, every budget. So you can see that the three-month reserve is, we cannot spend the three months, which, which would be $43, $43 million. But this money is earning interest, and you can see some of the projects, these are completed or in progress. Some districts use fund balance to balance their budget, and, and we don't do this. Our fund balance that we have is strictly for additional projects that are one-year, one-year expenses. The ones that are listed, they're 16, and we have spent during the time that I've been here, almost 17 million. And you can see, and I'll, I'll just kind of read these. One, district-wide library furniture. Number two, classroom furniture. Number three, additional cost to the HVAC. We're doing the gym bleachers at Central and Big Garza, barbie field bleachers, the band practice areas. We didn't get, we didn't get them off for this school year, but they're, they're set to go sometime in the fall, so they should be ready for next year. We've done some water fountains with canopies. We, we bought additional vehicles, campus, campus lawns, tractors, activity buses, the, the canopy, the Panther Wildcat turf replacement. They should be ready for the new football season. We, we purchased HVAC units, the lighting upgrades at the stadium, the middle school running track equipment. We, we had, we have four tracks, but they're just the equipment. Three were from the bond election, and then the demolition for the pool at the high school, and then we purchased some yellow buses. So again, these are, these are already budgeted. They're either completed or in progress. On page nine, these are the ones that we have already completed. On page nine, these are the ones that we have already completed. They're not, they were not part of the budget, but they've already completed. The billboard digital conversion, and you can see that's used for all the kids. We have so many tremendous kids in our school district that we want to recognize them, and we're one of the few districts that has the billboard digital. We've done the, on two, the lighting at the stadium, the chairlift, the aquatic center, the scoreboard, fuel stations, baseball, softball fields, two at each one, activity buses, yellow buses, vans, safety and security trucks, elementary campus sensory rooms, again, more vehicles, and again, the portable units. So these are, these are, these are not part of the budget, but these have been completed. On page seven, these are the ones that are pending. They're not yet, they're not yet complete. We've got about $4 million left, and working with the board, we'll, we're going to, we're going to rank these as to what, what we needed the most. Again, we have furniture, secondary sensory rooms, we have rod arm around the Panther Drive, fire alarm, electric gates at the, in our schools, the aquatic center lighting upgrade, central office roofing, pavilion repairs. Then we have on number nine, the Mary Hope North Entrance Drive, to improve that one, the flat work at the stadium, and then some existing work at the Pied Rodrigo Agfar. Again, these are, these are not part of the budget. These are monies that we have left over, about $4 million. So this is, this are pending. On page 11, I want to report to the board that we had a visit in April from TA. There were minor, minor, minor items that were identified that have been corrected. I want to commend Danny Reyna, the principals, and my staff for doing a real good work here, and the key here is to keep all our schools safe for staff and for students. On page 12, I want to report safety and security. Very proud of our schools. We reduced the fights from last year to this year by 40%. That's a big accomplishment. And we want to continue on C. We want to continue the investment in security cameras, access controlled doors, fancy armed security guards, best-of-bills, security film on doors and windows. So again, the goal here is to have safe schools, and again, it's a tremendous reducing fights by 40%. That is, that is awesome. We want to go ahead and continue and have less, less fights on campus. On page 13, on tonight's agenda is the budget with a compensation plan. We had a good presentation. It's a balanced budget, and with, with additional house bill, two monies is going to be balanced. But as we look at the budget, we also have to look for '26, '27. So there'll be no new monies. So the only new monies will be with the ADA or any of the savings that we do. So again, we're looking at the budget for '26, '27, but I'm also looking at the '27 budget. So I'm, Steph and I are way ahead thinking also about the following year. And I want to report on risk management, that every employee in the district should, should they, should, is a life insurance of $25,000 should they pass away. So that's part of the benefits that we have at Westlaco ISD. On the construction, there's items on the agenda under consent. We're going to demolish the central gym, and we have the rankings for the Mary Hope Running Track, and also for the, for the band practice synthetic turf. So again, these are part of tonight's consent agenda. On HR, I'm proud to say that no staff lost their job, no schools were closed, and I'm sure you've read about schools throughout, throughout Region One. Some, some, some staff lost their jobs, and some schools were closed. I'm happy to report that through careful budgeting planning, again, no schools were closed and no one lost their job. I'm also happy to report that is that tonight, we have less than 1% teaching vacancies that need to be filled during the summer. And again, good, good job to HR and to the principals for filling these slots. On page 15, 16, and 17, these are the preliminary scores. And you can see that, that Memorial went from a 90 to a 91. They continued with their A. Raoul Gonzalez from 89 to 91, so they made an A. Great job to Raoul Gonzalez. Sam Houston, great job to them too. They went from an 89 to a 91, so they have an A. So we had three schools that attained the A. Collectr Held, they went from an 85 to 87, so they improved by two points, B and B. Margot, very proud of Margot, they went from a 74 to an 85, so they went from a C to a B. And North Bridge, 82 to 82, they maintained their B. Mayo Ibarra, they went from a 76 to an 80, so from a C to a B. So we had three As and we had, we had four, four Bs. Tony Rico went from an 82 to a 79, B to a C. Airport, a C, 79 to 72, a C. And Rudy Silva, even though, even though they scored a D, they scored a D because in three of the domains, they, they were, they scored low, but they're, they're actually a 70, but they're, they can't score higher than a, than a 69, that's why they're a D. But there was, there was big improvement at Rudy Silva from a, from a 60 to a 70. On the middle schools, Central, State, and A, they went from a 91 to a 91. Armando Cuellar, they went from a 70, good job to them, 73 to an 84, from a D to a B. The Atres Garza went down one point, 84 to 83, a B. Mary Hope went down two points from a C, and again, they were a D simply because in three of the four domains, they did not, they scored low on those. So even though it's a 77, they cannot, they cannot score higher than a D because they're two domains. So again, these are, these are the, the middle schools. The high schools, South Palm Gardens, 94 to 95, an A. Westlaco High School went from an 88 to a 92, an A. Westlaco East went down three points, from a B to a C, and as a district, we're at a B. So these are the scores. Very proud of these scores overall, because most districts do not have the scores that we have, compare, compare, again, compared to other schools. So great job to all our principals, and all we want to do is to become better for the new year. On the insurance, on the insurance, as you can see, the policy ends on August the 31st. Right now, we spent less, 1.5, if you look at the claims, the RX, the total. The funding for this year was $21 million. The, the year date, we spent 13.1, the stop loss, .1. So right now, we have a balance of $6 million through May. But on the bottom, you will see that the expenses, June through August, will be about $6 million, so we're going, we're going to break even. But on next year's budget, we added another $1 million as far as, as far as to the insurance. On page 19, this is the workers' comp. We had, we had less claims, we paid less, the funding was 481. So far, the claims, we spent 355, and then it's projected through June. Now, on these, on these long-term claims, these are claims from two years, three years, four, four years, we continue paying, because the employees that got hurt, we're still paying out some money. But we do have a fund balance of 152, and we do a lot, a lot of safety training to make sure, we don't want our employees to get hurt. So again, we're, we're doing good on the insurance. The last slide I have is, these are major accomplishments. It was a very good year. Are we, are we perfect? No. Can we improve? Yes. But, but overall, there were so many good things that happened during the year. And again, our goal is second to no one, second, second to no one, and you can see the Lone Star, continue with that. The digital billboard I mentioned to recognize all our students, and we have so many students that, that are, that are just outstanding. Our scores, STAR, you'll see, are among the highest in Region One. We've got a healthy fund balance that addresses academics, athletics, and maintenance. We're among the highest salaries in Region One. Again, as I mentioned, no one lost their jobs, we didn't close schools. We're going to continue with the incentive stipend. Last year, we gave 2,000. This year, the plan is to give 2,000, but the 1,000 in May will be contention on, on ADA. We addressed the budget deficit of $16 million. The citizens passed the bond election of 160 million. We've done, we're still doing, addressing this in our facilities, the fine arts, athletics, and we still have, as Mr. Los Santos mentioned earlier, we still have one of the lowest tax rates in Region One. And we have a successful, successful opening of our, of our college development center with 40 graduates. Again, it was a very good year. There are major accomplishments, these and a lot more. Again, we're not perfect. We can improve, and we're working on all our deficiencies. Again, this is my report. We're very proud of Westlaco ISD, and our parents, our teachers, our students. So it was a tremendous, a tremendous year. This is my report. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I'll begin over here on the, my right side. Mr. Los Santos, any questions for Dr. Rivera on his presentation?
No. Though I think we covered everything. We, we got this earlier and I read through it, and then we discussed some of it in preliminary.
Correct.
I think it's just, now at this time, now I don't actually have any questions. It was a good, good presentation.
Thank you. All right. I should have started on the left then.
Doc's looking at me like, really?
Coach, Eric Silva?
Yes, just congratulate all the campuses. Great job. I mean, you know, overall, it's a great job, like Dr. Rivera said. On the major accomplishments, I know I've spoken to Dr. Rivera about this and to some of the board members. Recognizing on the digital board, recognizing the academic all-state athletes. And possibly fine arts, if there's something that is done for fine arts. I know athletics, because I was in athletics.
We address this, no, no, later on. Later on. Just to address it.
I know we do the district champs.
So we did do the academic all-state last, last month. They're actually, I believe they're on there right now.
On the billboard?
On the billboard, on the digital billboard, yeah.
Westlaco High or Westlaco East are together?
Both schools, the entire school district. And we'll, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay. And then just, going to bring it up, just a list, Coach Rodriguez, about the academic all-state for both schools, per sport. Just give, give us a little rundown of how we did this year, per sport. Yeah. And I think that was it.
That it? Mr. Castillo?
Yes, Mr. Castillo, just a couple. Dr. Rivera, first, I just want to thank you for, for being transparent on, on our scores and publishing them, and so the community could see and so the board could see. We had seen the preliminary Domain One scores, but we hadn't seen this yet, so thank you so much for that information. And congratulations to all the principals who, who had a significant increase from last year to this year. That's, that's a great job, and thank you. You make, you, you guys just make Westlaco ISD again second to none, so thank you guys so much for that. Now, my question on that, Dr. Rivera and Ms. Olano, is what are we going to do for the campuses that didn't go up, that they, they had a decrease? Do we have a plan in place? Are we, are we looking at that?
The answer is yes. Ms. Olano, go ahead.
Yes, sir. With Mr. Garlic and Mrs. Morales now as the academic officers for both the elementary and the secondary, we have a plan in place to come and mentor and add.
She, she left at the right time, too. That's, that's awesome.
Amazing scores, amazing scores for Westlaco High. So, you know, we will be in there just to make sure that more of the data monitoring, the good instructional practices are in place, and we can support, if potentially new teachers. And then again, our adoption of the new curriculums, high-quality instructional materials, I believe will also help additionally.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, like, congratulations to Silva, right? Whatever you guys have been doing there, I know, I know they're here on the D, but they, they increased a lot. And so we want, we want to make sure that, you know, Rico and Airport have that same type of support, so they could be where they, what they need to be, you know, for all campuses to be A or Bs. I mean, eventually all As, right? But so we can get them the resources that they need. And then, I mean, in the high schools, again, you know, the other day, I was, South Palm Gardens, they always have great data to where an administrator asked me, what is that? Is that a magnet school? I was like, no, I don't think so, I think. So, so good job for that. You always, every, every year I've been here, it's been A, 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 90, night, everything has been great data, so thank you for, for your work on that as well.
And no fights.
All right, well, it takes leadership, so thank you for your leadership, and please thank your teachers on, on behalf of the board. Yeah, I mean, that's just it. I just want to make sure that we're getting the support to the, to the elementaries and the middle schools and the high school that needs the support, so they, so all of our, you know, all of our campuses can be As. That's all I got. Mr. Nettles.
Good points, Mr. Castillo. Good question.
Like everyone says, you know, it's all right there. Great job, great year, but the bar's been set. You know, the expectations are there, but I don't think there's any question about what you're going to continue to do, and we're very appreciative of that. That's all we can ask of you. Just give it what you have, and when you have a little time, take time to rest a little bit, sharpen the saw, and get ready for next year. But again, Dr. Rivera, your staff, principals, teachers, everyone that's involved, thank you very much for the work that you've done.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you. Dr. Jaime?
Same, you know, great job. I know there's already a plan in place, you know, for, for these campuses that need, you know, the resources and the help, and I know, speaking for the entire board, you know, we have, you know, the support for whatever is needed to, to keep that momentum going and to heap, and to help those other campuses. And, you know, you can see it with Cuellar and Margot and even Silva, you know, the, the big changes that can happen in one year. So it's doable, you know, and appreciate all the hard work. I know it's a lot of hard work there, and, and great job, great job.
Thank you, Dr. Jaime. Mrs. Sustega?
Yes, I wrote down three points. And I'm going to start with the number one, which was what they all already said, just great job. I'm in the classroom, and I know that, how it is, how difficult it is to see growth more than anything. You know, you start off here, and you want to see that growth, so I'm going to give a shout out to the schools that I calculated, I did my numbers, that had the most growth. And for the elementaries, Margot grew 11%, which was more than all the other schools. So yay, Margot! Good job, Margot, 11%. And then in the middle school, Cuellar is the one plus 11%, so great job to Cuellar also. They did a lot of growth. Good job, Ms. Palacios and your staff. And then I, I heard it was the first time that Westlaco High School got an A ever. I don't know if that's true or not. Is it the first time that, or it's been a long time since Westlaco High got an A, was rated A, but they also grew 4%? So shout out to Westlaco High. Good job. That growth is hard. It's really difficult. So it's just amazing to see in all the schools. All the schools did awesome, and we're just very excited and supporting you guys and your staff, because I understand how difficult it is. So great job to you guys. And the number two, I was looking over at the attendance, and that we were talking about how we, you know, lost out on that money. My question is, and I, it's happened to me, it's happened to other parents, sometimes our schools, our schools, our, our students get to class a little late, and teachers, I know for me, by 8:00, 8:30, let me do the attendance, get it out of the way, and then later on, the kids walk in, you know, they walk in tardy sometimes. But it's already been input in the system, they're already marked as absent. Are we going back? And people have told me, well, my kid was still marked absent, even though they were tardy, they were marked absent for the whole day, but they were there at 10:00, it was just that it was never fixed. So my question is, are we keeping track of, you know, those mistakes that maybe we did have kids, but they were counted absent, or how are we, then that's the attendance clerk's job, but are we, you know, keeping track of how are we fixing those mistakes? Who can I ask? I don't know.
We should. And that's the principals. Any comments from the principals? I think you'll go back and check.
As they walk in late to the front office, because that's where they come in through, they document it, and then the data, and the attendance clerk goes in and makes some changes.
Okay. Okay, so hopefully, you know, that we can just make sure, maybe, you know, maybe some kids might be tardy, but they might be absent, so I just wanted to check on that, just to make sure we're good there. And then also, I know that some of the, when I was teaching here, we had the perfect attendance incentives and all these little incentives that we have for the kids. Are we still doing that? Are we still, principals are nodding yes. Okay, good job. Because I know, we all need incentives, right? We need motivation to be there. So it's good to know that the incentives are there for the kids, whatever we're doing. Okay, awesome. Thank you, principals. And then the last thing that I noticed, Dr. Rivera, my last question, it was slide, it was about the fund balance. On number three, it says additional cost for HVAC. Our original budget was $6.3 million.
Yes.
And then we have an additional cost of $5.1 million, so now we're at $11.4 million, which is almost double of the original budget. What happened?
Well, it was very low the first time.
I can answer that. He was actually asking me before you asked the question. Dino Coronado was the superintendent at the time, and I was on the at the time, and I was on the construction committee with Andrew Gonzalez, and so, I don't like the process the state has. The state says that you have to hire an architect engineer, first the district has to come up with a budget, and then the architect engineer gets hired, so you're kind of estimating, like, in other words, I told people, you're gonna buy a house, don't tell the builder what you're approved for. Don't go in there and say, hey, I'm approved for three hundred thousand, because your house is gonna come out to, guess what, possibly two hundred and ninety-nine. So, back then, with Coronel was here, we talked about in one open session, it's actually even been filmed, we talked about saying, we're not gonna go with the estimated engineer's estimate, because he gets paid on a percentage level. The architect and engineers get paid on a percentage, so of course, the higher the cost, the more money they have, I'm not questioning their ethics and morals, so, back then, we said, we're gonna go with our own estimate, okay? Go, go with your own estimate, put your own money in there, and then see, that way, the companies are gonna see that we have funds, because we were barely rolling into the surplus. We were talking about a bond at the time only, it was just, we were just talking about it. So Dr. Coronel put the, I think he went a little bit too low, but he went and he put on there six point three million. Now, the initial estimates first came back, and they came in, I think, at what, at sixteen million or something like that? Okay, well, in the initial estimates, and then Dr. Rivera kicked them back for best and final offer, and then he kinda was pushing, right? And at the end of the day, we ended up spending a total of a little bit over eleven million, under twelve, which at the time was excellent. So that was kind of my mentality of, why are we putting in a budget, we're estimating, and the medical, you're sitting there, you're kinda nodding your head, we have to do that, right? We have to put in a budget before we even hire an architect engineer, but when you put twenty million, that architect and engineer, I'm not saying they're gonna do it, but then you're kind of already setting the price of what you're willing to spend. So I said, if they already know we have money and we have a bond, because they know we can increase the amount anytime, Dr. Rivera supported that as well, too, that's actually what he does, don't put, don't put the max, we'll put, okay, we're gonna put fifteen, and if it comes in at seventeen, fine, we'll add two, but why are we gonna put twenty, and then it comes back at nineteen million, or nineteen point five? And that was kind of like the confusion there, as far as why Dr. Coronel put such a low amount? Well, it was just to kind of do an experiment, see if we can bypass that requirement from the state, but that also hurts taxpayers, because you'll see it. And a lot of people did reach out and say, really, the credit ran out to Dr. Rivera, but a lot of people said, how are you knocking out your bond and still saving on so many projects? Because a lot of districts had small bonds, and they surpassed them, and they didn't do anything on the list. And so right now, the way we're operating, and with Dr. Rivera's system, we're actually gonna get more than there was promised. So, so yeah, it's, it's really working out super well, and I congratulate you and your team on that. And that's how that, then that's kind of to answer that question, that's why it was so, budgeted so low at the beginning.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Los Santos.
Yes, sir.
I think everybody asked the questions, I don't have any to ask, no. I just have one thing, on ADA, you saw how much we lost, so it's important that, and I, I believe Dr. Rivera will talk to you about it, principals, later on, what, what's the plan to help out, uh, so our ADA can improve, so we can receive that money? We were talking about two million dollars that we lost or more, so that way the schools can receive that money. So it's something for principals to plan ahead, and plan with your staff and so forth. Uh, and like Ms. Sustaita said, a lot of parents don't understand that if you're taking a certain time, they come present, or if they come back at the, at the, during the, uh, day, if they have a doctor's excuse, you can change that, uh, attendance to present. So those are little things that parents need to understand, too, but, uh, as principals, you have to teach those to your teachers and your staff and so forth. And on data, I believe, uh, Mrs. Solano and, and, uh, and, and the rest of the central office staff will follow up on, several schools did very well, like Ms. Sustaita mentioned, but what is it that we can do, and, and I go back, when I was principal, that I would analyze data by objective and see, okay, why did we do so poorly in this objective? Okay? And I remember one year that I sent my math staff to Rio Grande City, because Rio Grande City did very good in math, so I sent some of my math teachers over there to find out what is it that they're doing that their scores increased. So here within us, let's find out the three schools that scored As. There's still some areas that they were not weak on, but they scored low compared to the other schools that did very low, okay, so what is it that they're doing so they can help each other out? You know, that's very important. Every school can, you know, a lot of times you say, no, it's my school, uh, I cannot help anybody else, but, you know, when, at the end of the day, they're gonna say West Loco ISD, then they're not gonna say each school, but like here, we said each school, but together, we can work better together and, and, and find out what objectives were we gone, and, and then work, like Mr. Los Santos mentioned, you know, what is the area that we need to work on so they can improve? We can, and I know we have capable principals, and of course, Dr. Rivera and staff can do that job, and next year, we have more As, and the Cs move to Bs, and the Bs move to As. You know, that's just, it's hard work, uh, but that's where you're a principal, you know, to lead and to encourage and to motivate every single day, not only your staff, but your students and your student groups and so forth. Okay?
Mr. Nettles, now you say that, and then we're gonna get into LSG next. A lot of our questions, I know some of my questions, maybe the other boards, have exactly to do with that, and we see through our goal progress measures that the NWEA has been predictive of the scores that we're seeing right now, so that'll be interesting when we get to that agenda item next.
Mr. Nettles, just one more thing, I know, Jack, you brought up the registration and the projecting, projections.
Right.
When do you think we'll be able to see those numbers? Like, do we, do we have?
So, registration numbers, I can tell you, right now, we are sitting as a district at fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-three as of Thursday afternoon. We are still looking at one thousand five hundred and two students that left us, basically just wanna say May thirty-first, that have yet to preregister. We have a dedicated team that works on this Monday through Thursday, between new to the district and then working to get those. Our goal is sixteen thousand five hundred, that is our goal.
And do we have a breakdown by campus?
We do.
Yes.
We do. We have a breakdown by campus. Again, the older the student, the more difficult it is to get them to register, the younger the student, the parents are more involved, but again, we are working, we're calling home visits, all of those things are taking place in intent to get those numbers back.
Great job to George Lopez, I know he's out there working hard and trying to recruit.
It is George Lopez's team, that's correct.
Could I make a suggestion, Mr. President?
Yes. On the, on that preregistration, you know how we go out to restaurants and stuff? What did we post up at the end-of-year award assemblies?
And I can tell you, when we do, starting in March, because we open it up in March, we do encourage the campuses to have areas that where they can have the parents preregister right there.
No, but we have George Lopez there doing his hype work.
We have him at restaurants, but we do do it at the campuses also from the beginning. But again, we continue to try to refine our processes to work towards getting that done each and every year for our parents and our families.
Can we get a preliminary breakdown?
We can. We can.
On the updates?
Can I piggyback off of that report? And also, how many of the, with the ADA, you can see the significant impact in the secondaries? How many of those students are intra-district and out-of-district? And like those, those truancy issues that you're having? You know, 'cause I know we're an open district, we, we have open enrollment, but do, can we get a report to saying, okay, you know what, of the people, the population that's, that's affecting our ADA, it's intra-district or out-of-district? Just to, just to identify?
We can look at our two-twenty and two-twenty-five. We can.
Okay. Good questions.
Carlos, Carlos does a good job, too.
We can.
Yes.
All right, any, any other questions?
No.
All right, let's continue. Uh, number eight, Long Star Governance, Dr. Rivera. Yes, Ms. Solano? Eight-eight point one.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Um, hi, good evening, Mr. Nettles, members of the board, Dr. Rivera and community. So, uh, this month concludes basically the presentation for this school year, so we're going to be going over Goals One and Two, which are our Kinder through Second Math data, end-of-the-year math data. And then, uh, for the CPM, Mr. Dobleto already went over Budget Workshop Number Three. So we start with Goal One, right? And we're gonna look at GPMs one point one through one point three, which focus on NWEA map reading, RLA scores, end-of-the-year scores. So the slide that you have here in front of you, this is the, the board goal that was adopted, and this is to improve our third-grade performance at the Meets Plus when we started, uh, back twenty twenty-three, right, setting the goals. Uh, we set ourselves a five-year goal from fifty-two percent to sixty percent. The, the target for twenty twenty-five in third-grade star was a fifty-four, and you see that red line, those are the targets that we had set yearly, uh, to reach, uh, by twenty twenty-eight, the target of a sixty. This year's target was a fifty-four. Third-grade RLA as a district scored at a fifty-one percent Meets, uh, at the Meets Plus level, right? I do wanna, um, you know, just call your attention to the left-hand side of the slide, be, because this is something that we monitor as well. Domain Three, which is thirty percent of the rating for campuses, right? Uh, the target up until the school year of twenty twenty-seven, the state is requiring campuses to be at forty-six percent Meets Plus. Um, our district has already surpassed that interim target at a fifty-one. Then, of course, starting in twenty twenty-eight, that target, uh, will be that campuses meet the fifty-five, uh, percent at the Meets Plus of the population, and then in, uh, twenty thirty-three, sounds weird to say, twenty thirty-three to twenty thirty-eight, it'll be a seventy-three. The state performance this, uh, school year was at a forty-nine percent at the Meets Plus for RLA third grade. WISD's, uh, performance was a fifty-one percent Meets Plus. So while we did not meet our WISD board target for twenty twenty-four, I do wanna congratulate the staff, the teachers, the administrators for the hard work, because if you see it from the Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, we started Benchmark One data at a thirty-one percent Meets, increased it second semester to a forty-five, and finished it off at a fifty-one, right? Had significant gains with this cohort, short off the target, but, um, that is why we're reporting we are not on track, uh, for RLA third grade. So Kinder through Second support our third-grade goal, so those are the next slides that you will see. So in the next slide, you see the Kinder First and Second Grade performance. Kinder, uh, and, ended the school year with a forty-six percent Meets Plus, um, uh, grade level, that, that population, the district target was a fifty-eight, right? Um, First Grade ended the school year at a thirty-four percent Meets Plus in our population in First Grade, the dark, the target was forty-six, and Second Grade's target was a forty-six, and overall, as a district, we were shy from meeting that target by three points, we scored a forty-three percent, right? Again, the overall goal for Third Grade is for them to be at a fifty-four, so, and, so you could see the difference of how each grade level is preparing the students for that, certain population of students performing at that post-secondary readiness for each of the grades. So, um, Kinder First or Second did not meet the district's target, so we are not on track for that Third Grade overall board goal, uh, one. The next slide, you will see, uh, the Kinder First and Second Grade data by campuses, uh, you will see that there is, as per our star data, right, that, uh, Dr. Rivera just shared in his superintendent's report, you see some of the same similar campuses that have reached those high, uh, performing areas. And again, I do wanna remind everyone that when we talk about NWEA map, we focus on achievement, not on growth, at the post-secondary readiness. So you have, um, your Kleckler Held, Memorial, uh, at Times, your Gonzalez, your Sam Houston, that throughout the year, beginning, middle, um, and some of the end-of-the-year reports met their targets, but you do have other campuses that made tremendous gains throughout, uh, from middle of the year to end of the year, like, I wanna highlight Ibarra. Ibarra met their, a Second Grade target, made a huge turnaround from middle of the year to end of the year as well. And other campuses, Margot made tremendous gains as well, so, um, you know, we're, we're very proud of the campus work, but we know that there's work to, to be done. Uh, moving on to the next slide, and a lot of what's working at the campuses that are meeting the targets, it's probably what you'll see, what is not working at those grade levels or campuses that are not meeting the targets, right? So, um, one of the things that we know for sure that works, you know, uh, for grade levels or, or campuses that are meeting those targets, we look at those foundational skills, uh, instruction, right? Making sure that those foundational skills that are needed for your literacy are implemented in your daily instruction are embedded, right? We look at, uh, blended learning. Uh, this year, Mr. Amdal and Ms. Julie Kelly, along with Ms. Emily Rodriguez and Mr. Garlic, were very intentional in making sure that Kinder across the district, not only at certain campuses, but Kinder classrooms, uh, put these student experiences, um, in place, and a, a lot of it has to do with goal-setting, tracking, data-tracking and monitoring of the data, right? And again, Savas is our adoption for RLA. Uh, we feel that those campuses who were very intentional in tracking and monitoring the data, right, whether it's by unit, or kinda like your common formative assessments that were aligned to the adoption, were very successful as well. One thing that needs more attention, or several of the items that we've listed, is again, your comprehension, right? In the early grades, comprehension is critical, not just learning to read, but understanding, um, you know, what we're reading, and, and exposing them to those skills early on, monitoring of the fidelity of materials, and then again, your weekly standards, uh, for monitoring student data, your trackers, your affluency, huge component of that in the early grades, right? That we wanna make sure that we do this right. Um, and teacher training, so one of the things that we have, um, now that we've kind of piloted iReady along with Math, and that one of the things that we looked at again is having a good understanding of growth and achievement are two separate things, but both are being measured with fidelity, or must be measured with fidelity, right? So we understand and, and know in the data that we've received that we need more intensive, uh, professional development in knowing how to read these reports and one versus the other, right? What are the benefits of both? And then the opportunity for collaboration amongst the campuses, that is huge, and I know that, uh, one of the trustees asked that question. It is, it's very beneficial that, you know, other teachers share with other teachers their experiences and what works and what doesn't work, right, for them. So that is for RLA. Moving on to Goal Two, the data for Math, so we start with the overall goal. Goal Two focuses on Third Grade Math at that Meets Performance Level, again, reaching that sixty percent, right? And when the board adopted this goal, we, we talked about the ninety, sixty, thirty, right? So we wanted to be at that sixty, because we knew that that formula equal to an A, right? Um, here, uh, the target for twenty twenty-five was a fifty. West Loco ISD, uh, Third Grade Math, the cohort performed forty-five percent of the third graders at that Meets Performance Plus, you know, which we're very excited to share, right? Because if you look at it, the state was at forty-four, so we surpassed the state even in the Third Grade Math area as a whole, as a district, right? We are not meeting the board target, which is a fifty, and, and again, in three years, we have to meet the sixty, right? Um, however, we are working together with all of our leadership team, our instructional coaches. I do wanna say, uh, board, that the beginning of June, about a hundred campus administrators and instructional coaches met at the PLC, and we dug deep into this data of LSG and into the goals and the GPMs and the inputs and outputs and all the resources, right, that we needed to evaluate the data that we're receiving, right? So, um, again, um, beginning Benchmark One and Benchmark Two, you see that we were both at a thirty-seven for Math, and then increased it by the end of the year to a forty-five. So I, I wanna commend the teachers and recognize those gains, because those are very important gains. So saying that we're almost at a fifty percent across the district Meets Performance Level. Next slide, uh, it's Kinder through Second Grade, uh, data. Kinder, uh, forty-nine percent for the student population, forty-nine percent of our student population is already at that, uh, Meets Performance Level, the target was a fifty-eight. First Grade is forty-two percent, the target was a fifty. Second grade was a 38%, the target was a 46, right? And that green dotted line, as you see, it's the board goal target for the third grade, right? So you see how each grade level supports and contributes in preparing those students for that third grade target. So here, we are saying we are not on track. And then the next slide, you will see campus performance at that meets performance for each of the grades, right? Campuses who are meeting the target, campuses who are close to the target, and the district overall target for each of the campuses as well. So one of the things we looked at and we had conversations with the campuses and coordinators, instructional coaches. So one of the things that they're seeing here is for those, that the data is showing to be very prosperous, right? What is working? There's a lot of teacher collaboration and planning in their campus PLCs, a lot of internalization processes, a lot of the time to invest in their curriculum before they go into the classroom. So we know that that works, right? A lot of targeted small group instruction in centers. So in order to do this, you have to have a master schedule that supports a good amount of minutes for your RLA or math blocks, right? So are we being truthful to our master's schedules and are we investing the time there versus your tutorials or after school or Saturdays, right? Maximizing your tier one instruction. And of course, an alignment of curriculum documents and assessment is what you're using aligned or was it approved as a high-quality instructional material? Because we know that there's a lot of resources and vendors out there that we're going to want to purchase just to have one extra resource, but is it aligned to our goals? Is it aligned to the TEES and to high-quality instructional materials? What needs more attention? Again, I think here for the math, we talked about and we adopted Blue Bonnet. So we are going through a very rigorous process for implementation with Region One. Region One is our third-party provider or consultant for the Blue Bonnet implementation. I think principals can share, elementary and middle school principals, that they are going through very rigorous training. I don't think we had ever adopted a curriculum, you know, you purchase it and you just receive the textbooks and there you go. This time around, it has been more like, uh-uh, before we give you anything, you've got to receive some training so that you understand the purpose, how it was built, what comes with it, and how you're going to support in every role and capacity, right? So before teachers get it. So I believe they've had four three-hour courses just up until this week. Will receive two additional days in July before even teachers come in. And then teachers will receive two-day PD at the beginning of the year plus six weeks additional support, right? So we will be monitoring that. But again, I do want to highlight that last bullet, understanding the difference between achievement versus growth. Because there's a lot of systems or processes in the district that some monitor growth, accountability ratings monitor both, right? So we want to ensure that we're monitoring both with fidelity. So that is the end of my presentation, but I know that we had some questions coming in by trustees, Mr. Nieto, so I don't know if you want me to go over those.
Yes, go over those. Some of them submitted them.
Yes.
And then some of them will last probably today, because I know some of them work a lot, so.
Yes.
It's time-consuming, so you can respond to the ones that were sent to you.
So, Mr. Lees, I believe you're working the slide, and we'll go to the third grade reading slide, goal one, right? So, you know, because it shows that we are not on track in for third grade reading, what other, what do we need to provide for our staff, right? Especially for teachers so that students can improve their scores. So we believe very strongly, and principals receive training on PLCs implementation and the fidelity to weekly PLCs to be able to give teachers that uninterrupted time for planning, digest, and even just data talks. So we feel that this will strongly, campuses who perform very highly have that, you know, with fidelity and who saw tremendous gains. We saw Margot with an 11-point gain, right? Their PLCs are just powerful, right? So we know that being faithful to that, we know that Region One is mimicking and modeling this for math, but we're going to use it across all content areas because we know that that's just the best practice for all, right? So we're going to continue to do that. Along with that, I know that there was a question that says, we've been at a 50 for two years and now we're at a 51, right? It was a one-point gain. We have nine points in three years to get to nine points. So you have an item in your agenda to look at the revised GPMs, right? Because that was some of the work that campus administration with district and instructional coaches looked at. We understand that the goal and the target does not change, but we changed the distribution between the years to give us a more fair opportunity to reach the goal, right? With the resources that we're going to roll forward and supports, right?
Well, that's the question I asked you, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if we're going to lower the percent that we're looking at for GPM, the GPMs, we want to decrease them, right?
No, so we are not decreasing targets, Mrs. Saito. We're just, if it's 60, my end target, and I had 51 and 54, maybe next year instead it's 52 and 56. I'm just changing, revising the GPM before I meet the target of 60. The overall target does not change.
Right, I know the overall target doesn't change, but the GPMs and getting there are changing.
Right, yes.
And we are not increasing them, we're decreasing them.
Depending, yes, depending on the subject, yes.
Okay, and that was my question, because we have to grow nine points. But I know the goal is the same, it's still 60, but we're going to decrease our target every couple of months. Is that going to help us?
So collectively as a group, right? When the 10 elementaries, I think it was probably a group of 70, as elementaries bring APs, principals, and everyone together, they felt that the distribution the first time around wasn't going to be achievable, right? So they felt that with the resources and the supports that we're planning to roll forward for next year, it would be a better opportunity to help them achieve those yearly targets or the annual targets.
I'm just thinking about it as like, let's say I want to run a mile in 10 minutes, and this time I ran it in seven, but my goal is 10, but I'm going to give myself six minutes next time, but I'm still going to get to 10. You know, it just kind of like, mm, I don't know. I don't know if.
Can I jump in?
I kind of agree.
Well, let me jump in on this real quick, can I? I mean, I'm kind of jumping in a little bit late, but I got to understand the questions. So it's kind of like, I understand exactly your example about running and setting yourself standards and trying to meet those and exceed them, but populations also are different. Every single incoming kindergartner, and correct me if I'm wrong, every single cohort that's coming in is not on the same level, also has different needs and, you know, issues. And so every single crop you have is kind of like sports. You can't expect to win the state championship, you know, a district championship every single year. Sometimes you have kids that are coming in, you got to work with and develop and build. So it's an unsustainable cohort, like if you can't predict the cohort you're going to get. Junior high principals can only assume by the data that they're getting, how they're coming in from elementary and fifth grade into sixth, but they won't really know until they bring in and then start their own beginning of the year assessments and then start addressing the needs. So like, I guess to answer the question for both trustees is that, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you can't predict, like you can't keep the same standard for third grade math every single year because incoming second graders are different. Some are like super advanced and are rocking it and killing it, and then some of them aren't, and that's why you see fluctuations in campus performance and.
But it's like me, when I'm a teacher, I have my six-weeks goal, every kid, every year has to read at a D, E, F, and it's not going to change by, oh, it's because this cohort reads a little bit less than the other cohort, so, but I still have the same goals. So why am I going to change those intermediate goals if my end goal is still to get them here?
I agree.
And so like the last two years, and I don't, because the questions, I wish we had the questions written up here so that we can all see what the question is. But in the last two years, the scores, and we just heard at LSG like, you know, a year and a half ago or something. But in the last two years, our scores went up 1%, right? Of what, like, let's see for reading in third grade. It went up in the last two years, 1%. In three years, we're supposed to go up nine points. So we didn't do it in the last two years, we went up 1%, but yet we're supposed to grow nine points in the next three years. That's really difficult.
Do you retest kids? That's a question I guess I have, because since it's not really seeing the same test and this test fluctuates depending on the student and how they're answering. Do you tell them, say, you know what, Mark came in, he had a bad day, I could tell, let's put him back on, retest them, or you just go with that?
Right, it's just that one opportunity.
That's your one shot.
Well, this is the star testing.
So, so these are for the GPMs?
For the star.
Right, that overall impact to the third grade goal.
I think she's referencing.
You're talking about your, are testing for on the map?
Well, I don't know, I can't even see my question.
Because you're talking about moving the map scores, right?
So your question, Mrs. Saito, was two years ago, we were at 50% for third grade students at the meets performance level in star reading.
Star.
Two years later, right, we are at 51%, which is a one-point increase, right? What is the plan to improve scores by 9% in the next three years? So one of the difficult things, and what you're seeing that changes, we didn't mess with the board goal.
Yeah.
That stayed the same, right? The way it's distributed is the way the board adopted it. What we changed were the GPMs, those grade levels that are going to support. If you notice on the GPMs, one of the things that we discussed. Right, so one of the things that we discussed is Kinder first and second are at the 70, right? Third grade stops at the 60% mark, but our Kinder first and second grade goals were set at the 70% mark. So they have greater gains, right? Which seem like, okay, if we're not meeting the 60 just yet, we're very proud of the work because we're a district that's performing at the 50 or above the state at that meets performance level, but we set our GPMs target higher than our third grade star target. So that is making it very difficult for us to say, well, you've got to surpass that, right? So, which our GPMs have greater gains, but we did not move the third grade at all, because that's not.
And that's important, because I know part of the board evaluation, one of the questions is, have you not corrected the goals within the last year? Which we are not, we're going to keep the goal the same, it's just the GPMs. What I'm just saying is, should we? I don't know, that's something the board can think of.
I follow you now, I see what you're saying.
That's a discrepancy we saw, right? But again, we did not change targets, we just changed distribution.
But you mentioned that you had met with the principals.
Right, principals, assistant principals, and instructional coaches.
Okay. And this isn't used for evaluation or anything like that, but just our own.
No, 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 it's just a review of the annual targets, yes.
So I could see why now she's saying, don't change them and don't lower them, because we're still setting the bar high and kind of pushing.
It's like the basketball game that we talked about, you know, first quarter, we got to have this many points, and look, you know what, let's have a little bit less points, we're still going to win the game, but we don't need as many points. It just kind of, but I understand also.
So our biggest goal, right, is to always do better than the previous year.
Right.
Difficult to know, right? Every cohort is different, but we know and we studied the data of that cohort from the previous year and what is it that we need to do to meet or get close to that target, right? Again, do want to commend the principals and their teachers because it's tremendous, right? To say where that 50% or close to 50% of the population in third grade at the meets plus, it's very good, right?
Right, no, it's great performance.
Right, so, and so moving on to math, we're the same things, right? Our students are below our goal of that 50% again at that meets, right? Even though we surpassed the state, our third graders are at 45. So what additional resources will we put in place? Again, I believe that the strong foundations, the Losso grant, what, you know, what we got awarded and hope to be awarded, just the support from Region One and what we will be learning, you know, by their modeling and so on, and then mimicking that across all content areas, I think will strengthen all of our scores. So that is one thing we will be monitoring. And then I know there were other questions, what is the district planning to do, right? To make sure that all teachers receive grade level appropriate training so they are fully prepared for Blue Bonnet, right, for the math curriculum? Administrators, instructional coaches, or APs, Central Office is going through training right now so that by the time teachers come, they have a better understanding of their newly adopted curriculum and can better support, do learning walks, right, and be on the same page, but also value the time needed for planning and resources for teachers, right? And then teachers will receive that extra PLC time or PD time every six weeks, right? So one of the biggest things we know, growing pains with a new curriculum, well, now I have a new curriculum, but what I use worked, right? And that's going to be a challenge for teachers that their data worked, right? So we're saying keep your best instructional practices, but adopt high-quality instructional materials, right? So with that being said, PLC, strong PLC processes at all campuses, and that's going to be strongly monitored this coming year, because we noticed that those campuses who had those strong PLC conversations and time, right, not only first semester, but continued second semester, had the greatest gains. And we want to be able to see that across our campus. Levels, tier two instruction, how can we make sure and ensure that teachers, right, support and are faithful to tier two instruction? So tier two instructional is to those targeted groups, right? And the teacher is the first line of defense for tier two instruction, right? So every six weeks or every report card, progress report card, they have an opportunity or every time they assess, they have an opportunity to evaluate this data and act on the data right away. So we looked at grading guidelines as well, we looked at all of that during our leadership days. These are processes that are going to have to be highly monitored at the campus level, right? But through these systems, we believe, you know, students and teachers will have the support. And we talked about professional development already. So kind of summarizing, because some of the questions were the same, Mr. Nieto.
Okay. And again, thank you, board members, for submitting the questions ahead of time. That way, Mrs. Solano and the staff is well-prepared and provides the information that we need.
I have two questions. I didn't hear the answer, and I really wanted to know. Can I ask him? I have him here.
Yes.
Because I turned up in on Friday, and I was, you guys don't work on Friday. But one of them that I was really interested in, the collaboration, and you kind of spoke a little bit about the campuses collaborating, but I was told that the teachers, I guess maybe teachers I've talked to, they haven't been going to other campuses and observing, that it's been kind of like Central Office coming in and observing. It's not the actual teachers going into classrooms and looking, you know, getting ideas. Are they going to be allowed to do that, or have they not yet, or?
So that's a conversation with Region One that we had when we looked at our PDS, right? How can we structure them differently? Because obviously, Region One also has a support team, right? So campuses will be grouped together to come and collaborate with others, right? It won't be a campus PD or PLC, it will be an intra-district with multiple campuses collaborating. So yes, we will be doing that this year.
Okay.
Just like that. Yes, and campuses and, you know, principals, correct me if I'm wrong, we've had some principals that have sent their teachers over to other campuses and, you know, and all speak, right? I know Mrs. Garcia shared at the beginning of the year, I know Rudy Silva or other principals have reached out, what are your teachers doing, right? Kleckler held, Ms. Vanderbeer, I know her doors have always been open to what are your teachers doing, right? I know through blended learning, Mr. Amidal and Julie Kelly travel with teachers so that they can go look at other teachers, right? But that was a cohort of Kinder teachers. Next year, it's going to expand, and one of your questions was, what are we going to do different to lessen that gap between Kinder and first? Next year, we're expanding to first and second. So that will be key differences, right, of now aligning everything else, good practices to first and second.
Good to know.
All right, Dr. Hank. Even though we submitted, we might have another question or whatever.
I guess just real quick on, for the summer, you know, what resources or, you know, what are we offering parents, you know, so we can keep it going during the summer months, you know, some of the reading and the math? What are we doing with that?
Right, so, okay, so I know that Central Office of Coordinators had made available to campuses resources, campus resources, and I believe they're on the website under the academic portion of it. There's resources that you can look for online, obviously, too. Obviously, our summer school program that is addressing the needs, right, of those students who were identified, right, for support. ACE program also offers other experiences, right, to enhance, right, the learning as well. But for our teachers, Dr. Rodriguez as well, I want to highlight, being part of our curriculum writing committees that are taking place has been critical, right? Because they're firsthand experiencing the adoption materials, looking at aligning all of the other resources that we invest in as well, so.
Thank you. Good question.
Just like I mentioned before, weeks ago, we know what we're dealing with, you know what the expectations are, you know you have the support, just stay focused. You mentioned very, very clearly what needs to be done, and like Mr. Santos was trying to explain, you know, every student learns it differently. I was in it for a long time, so I know that you have to find a way to get to those students and never give up on what's going on. And I'm a firm believer in that I know where we want to be, but to get there, you need to understand where you're going to start. You just can't continue, continue, continue because this person's doing this and this person's doing that. And then in terms of wanting to know what somebody else is doing, if we can't get our teachers to go to a campus and then make a program and take that program and present it to them over there. I mean, there are different ways to skin a cat, you know, so. Again, my whole thing is about the encouragement, because I know what we're dealing with and it's not easy. And the challenge is there, but as long as we don't give up on our children, don't give up on ourselves, and don't question yourself, because it's very easy to do that. Sometimes when things don't work, you start to wonder, man, what am I doing wrong? It's not that, it's just that you have a very, very challenging situation and as long as you don't give up on those kids, we give ourselves the chance and we give them a chance. So just stay focused, get rest this summer, you know what you need to do, come back strong, and let's move forward.
Thank you, Coach Guer. Mr. Castillo?
I agree with Coach. That's a great statement to the teachers and to the principals and stuff. But I have a question for you on the resources that we're getting. So kind of piggybacking off of what Jackie mentioned earlier, looking at this first slide on the reading, and the math, I'm not too concerned about because we're switching curriculum already.
Yes.
So, and there was, you went 45, 40, then 45 again, so there was gain again, so. And so I'm excited to see what those scores look like next year once we start implementing that new curriculum. And thank you to the principals for all that hard work that you're putting into. I know it's going to make a difference in those scores. But with respect to RLA, 2023, 50, 2024, 51, 2025, 51. And we're not switching curriculum.
So if I may add, Mr. Castillo, we didn't do both simultaneously because Region One.
No, I get it, we've had this conversation before, but.
We are reviewing it this year.
Okay, but, so what are we going to do to make sure that we don't miss out on another year of?
Fidelity to the current and through the curriculum writing that has happened this summer, they have aligned, they have put in place some of the suggestions or recommendations that Region One has incorporated. We have. We have removed some resources that were not very supportive of our adoption or high-quality instructional materials to better prepare us for this coming year and not create a gap, an additional gap.
Because I could imagine if we're, like, yeah, we say resources, resources, but if we're flooding teachers with all this stuff, they might get overwhelmed, right?
Right.
So, yeah, removing, so kind of doing an audit or whatever, making sure what actually works. And then there was a statement that you made when you're talking about what works and what doesn't work on this. And one, one thing that you mentioned is campuses that did it, that stayed with fidelity, that followed the data, let's not give campuses an option, let's just do it.
Right.
You know what I mean?
So that will change this coming year.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Nieto, I didn't submit my questions, I apologize. And you're a great board president, but I did not live up to my expectations, I'm sorry, sir.
I know, you work a lot, so that's why I mentioned that earlier. Coach Serna?
I'm good.
Oh, Mr. Los Santos?
Yes, I know that the other, earlier I was stunned, I guess, because I didn't have any questions after the superintendent's report, so I kind of was like, okay, I can't believe I don't have one. But great job, everyone, on what you've been doing all year and also closing out the year as well too. I mean, you have done a lot and it's been exceptional. But going back to, like, we're talking about correlations between MAP and then STAR. And I was just kind of looking at something and I'm curious, like, I know you're talking about all these things that we've been talking about every single meeting that you're doing, the meetings and whatnot and everything. But looking at your, the geographical location, I don't know the zoning by memory, but looking at the geographical locations of the campuses that need improvement, that are working to get there to hit their, their own personal goals, you can see, you can see a pattern on where they lie, okay? And then those, and it's in elementary, and I'm looking at it right now, I'm actually looking at this slide and then plus yours.
Right.
And you can see the, the performance, the relative, the relation between the performance on MAP and their recent 2025 STAR. And you see that also then trickle into secondary as well too, okay?
Yes, sir.
So my question is, is those campuses have different populations, okay, than your Southside campuses, okay? And sometimes they have additional, maybe higher levels of bilingual, you know, bilingual students and whatnot, or whatever the case may be, their demographics are different. So have we looked at their demographics that they're dealing with and the majority of demographics in those campuses that are, on these two graphs that show that there's a need, right? That's what we're talking about. And two, how much staff development do you give them? When we're talking about resources, like, I can give everybody a book, but everybody knows, kind of like somebody said earlier, I think Coach Guerra, as far as sharpening the, sharpening that knife, how much staff development are we sending them off so that they can get help in these specialized areas, rather than resources, software, things like that? I'm talking about, I was, I mean, all the teacher and I know Jackie's still a teacher and those that were in the classroom, when you go to staff development, it's like what a learning experience because you're learning from people from all over the valley when you go to these things. So how much are they getting? How much staff development, staff development are they getting? How many times are their teachers actually going out that year and then dealing with these categories? And elementary, middle school, and high?
So I'll reference to your first question first on student populations, right? I know in one of our workshops, I expressed to Dr. Sinto just that, right? You know, for campuses with different special populations groups, whether it's higher or lower, how, how do we measure them with the same goal? And his response to me was, this is achievement, not growth.
Right.
And achievement is based on good instructional practices and that's what LSG strives to do, right? If good instructional practices work for all students, right? But with that being said, right, the support for professional development, right, at each of the campuses because good instructional practices have to be very, very strong, especially for those populations.
As our students change and they're exposed to things that we never were exposed to, it's like when I tell my kids, I remember a cassette tape, a CD, you know, we transitioned through these things. Some people remember the eight-track and things like that, munkers had those. But kids in the classroom, the dynamics of education and the instruction changes as well and evolves, right? And so I think staff development, I'm not saying we're not doing it, but if, if, how much are we doing? And especially for those campuses through, through elementary, middle school.
So I know, I know our coordinators, Mr. De Los Santos, have either face-to-face or virtual, depending on the time of year, right, second semester gets tech ticked with assessment. But they have it on staff development or PD, you know, support on those SEs or areas of challenges, right, in the core content areas. It was very-
Internal, you're saying internal?
Right. It's, you know, I know principals have that discretion to also send them to Region One, right?
They do get funding for that?
Right, yes, most definitely, and budget for that as well, and the coordinator's budget for that as well.
If we could get a report maybe on how much, how much-
PD.
Yeah. Whether they did it internally or externally, it's fine, but I'm just curious, yeah, because it's a pattern.
Definitely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. You answered my two questions and then, of course, you provided here on your slide, the teacher training, which is very important, and the opportunity to collaborate among campuses. Again, that was one of the questions that I had asked, and so you responded to that. Any other questions, Mrs. Sustaita?
No, but we're just talking about demographics and I've read a study, it's the Iowa study about effective boards. And I'm just gonna read a little bit, it says, "The difference between effective boards and ineffective boards, effective boards demonstrate specific beliefs and practices that correlate with higher student achievement, no matter what demographics, no matter whether you're black, white, Latino, special ed, you know, poverty economically disadvantaged. Effective boards set goals for everybody, they're the same. And ineffective boards, ay, well, pobrecitos, it's because they can't do it. And of course, it's hard, but we cannot lessen or we can't decrease the expectations that we have because it's important to keep those effective, I mean, those, those, those goals for our kids, no matter what. And it's a study, it's been proven with this Iowa study with what the difference between effective and ineffective boards are. So I just want us to keep that in mind as we make the decisions, that, you know, we set expectations for ourselves as well as for the whole district, so it's just something to keep in mind, that's all.
Good points. Dr. Heimlich, any other final questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Ben Castillo?
No, sir.
Final? Mr. Coach Serna? And Mr. Mark?
No, agreeing points.
All right, all right, so let's continue. Good, thank you, Mrs. Solano.
Thank you, sir.
So now we go to superintendent constraints and constraint progress measures. 4.1, that's a budget workshop, which you did, right?
Mr. Dovleado did.
Yes, okay, so now we go to board self-evaluation, correct? All right, so I have it here, and so I, I thank the board for providing those responses during the week. And so I'm gonna go over them, so that way we know exactly where we are and we know exactly where we need to go, so that way we can get to the mastery level by next year. So the first one, vision and goals, the board has adopted student outcome goals. And we had a score of a 12, and I utilized all the scores from all the board members because on the 12, all board members and the superintendent agreed that the student outcome goals will challenge the organization? Yes. Require adult behavior change? Yes. Are influential by the superintendent? Yes. Are the superintendent's first priority? Yes. And then the last one, the board relied on a root cost analysis, comprehensive student needs assessment, or a similar research-based tool to inform the identification and prioritization of all student outcome goals. So that was a 12. Now, in order to get masters, we need to work on those. And here's some of the ones for masters. All board members and superintendent, all eight of us, have committed the vision and student outcome goals to memory? No, we haven't yet, because I haven't even done that yet, okay? Know the current status of each student outcome goal? No, I don't think so. Agree that there is broad community ownership? That's an area that we're gonna have to work on. And like I mentioned before at one of the other board meetings, maybe in August when principals have meet the teacher, maybe you can allow us a few minutes and we'll see, I'll talk to the other board members, so who can attend that evening? Because I think none of you work in the evening, right? Except for Mr. Castillo. That way you can provide it just a few minutes and we can start presenting a little bit, you know, to the parents, if the principals allow us to, that way we can reach the mastery level. So on, on one, it was a 12. On two, the board has adopted goal progress measures aligned to each student outcome goal. And again, on that one, a 12, as I received this course from the board members, all board members and the superintendent agreed that the GPMs will challenge the organization? Yes. Require adult behavior change? Yes. Are influential by the superintendent? Yes. Are all predictive of their respective student outcome goals? Yes. Now, in order to reach mastery, again, we have to provide information to the community. We're not there yet, but we'll eventually get to that. On vision and goals three, the board has adopted constraints, which we have, and on the major, majority of the board rated a nine. The board has adopted 1-2-5 board self-constraints, we have. The board, where appropriate, relied on a root cost analysis, comprehensive student needs assessment, or similar research-based tool to inform the identification? Yes. All board members and the superintendent agree that the constraints will challenge the organization? Yes. In order to reach, go to masters, also, the community ownership is very important. That's something that we're gonna have to move forward and hopefully by then we can get to a 10. Under, the board has adopted superintendent constraint progress measures, CPMs, and this one, we rated it an average of a four, the majority of the board members. Here's some of the, all board members and the superintendent agree that the superintendent's CPMs will challenge the organization? Yes. Will challenge the organization to uphold community values? Are all predictive of their respective constraint and are influential by the superintendent? Yes. Again, mastery level, we have to involve the community. And that's something that we'll work on later on this coming year. On progress and accountability, we, one, the average was a 12. 25% or more of the total quarterly minutes in board authorized public meetings were invested in student, in improving student outcomes, which we did, it was 26%, you know? I don't know, but this time, I think this time will be a little bit higher. But the last time was 26%, so we're there. Mastery level, we have to be at 50%. So that's a difficult, but not impossible to attain with time.
And just to remind everybody, special board meetings, workshops, they all count towards those minutes. So every time that we have those, you know, workshop, insurance workshop or budget, it does take away.
Yes, it does.
I only ask questions on the scores during the superintendent's report on purpose.
But that doesn't count as LSG, ask them during the LSG time.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, and then-
Should ask all my questions.
Progress and accountability, two, the board evaluates but does not interfere with progress towards student outcomes. We, we rated it as a four, the majority of us. And it was, the board receives at least annually, annually a report on the average cost of staff time spent on governance. And one quarter ago, the board performed a self-evaluation, which we did, and voted to approve the quarterly progress tracker, which we have.
I have a, there, because there is a staff use tracker that we have not used.
Oh.
It's, it's, we have the time use tracker that tells us how many minutes are spent on each vision and goals and, you know, the pillars, but we have not used the staff use tracker, which is a whole different document.
Yeah, and I think, I believe Dr. Sinto was gonna train us, he hasn't trained us, the officers, to actually do that.
Yes, and we do not get an annual report of the average cost of staff time spent on governance. We have never gotten a report for that.
Okay.
So I don't think we should get four points there.
Okay. The majority of the board said four, so that's why I used a four. I know, I think you put a one on that one.
I put a two, I think, because, because of this staff use tracker that we're not using.
Okay. All right. Good point there, all right, so we continue to, 26 minutes, all right? The board evaluates but does not interfere with progress towards student improvement outcomes. The board receives, oh, that's the one that I just covered, correct? Yeah, that's the one, okay. So now we go to the board operates in a way that allows the superintendent to accomplish the vision. That one, we're at a four. And because on meets focus, board authorized public meetings the last quarter did not exceed an hour, an average of four meetings per month? We did, I think, I believe in that part. An average of three hours per meeting, approximately, it's gonna be kind of close. An average of five other topics per meeting. And most of you responded, you know, that we were meeting those, okay? The board says review its existing local policies. That's something we have to work on, so that's why we didn't get that 12. And only adopted local policies pertaining to board work. And so the average was a four for this particular framework, all right? So we continue on with the board promotes the vision. This one, again, we scored a three. We need to follow up on this because we haven't led or co-led at least one training for long-staff governance for the community, which we'll have to do in August. I know we mentioned that you and I talked to students at Westco East, but we need to do it with the community. And so we'll work with that in, in August, all right? And in order to get a masters, there has to be two-way communication with students, which that's something that I'm gonna begin this coming year. I already spoke to Dr. Rivera about having two students from each campus to meet here at central office for the first meeting, meet four times during the year with them and find out things about the school, what they need so they can improve, things like that. So principals, Dr. Rivera will meet with you in August and provide you the criteria, how to select those two students and from what grade level and so forth, okay?
And we, the board, will be here with you?
If, yes.
Whoever can.
Whoever can, you know, as long as it's not more than three.
Okay.
So when, I'll, I'll get those dates and then provide their information.
All right.
Okay. All right, let's continue to... The board works with the superintendent to lead towards the vision. And here, again, we're at a three. The board maintains an average attendance of 80% or higher, which we have. Agrees that all members have followed policy governing boarding procedures, I believe we have. Agrees that every member has completed all required trainings. We haven't done that yet, correct? And rather than the superintendent lead the completion of the all-star, lone star governance task. So we're, you know, we're getting there. In order to get mastery, all board members and the superintendent have completed the lone star governance, which we haven't. Agreed that all board members adopted board constraints, which we have. And agreed that no board member has given advice or instructions to staff members during the previous three months. I don't know if we have or not, but we, we rated it at a three. So as I went through them, final score, and I was, the last time that I rated it, I rated it a high. But as I read through it this time, I said, you know what, no, we're not, we're not meeting those particular objectives. So the majority of you had 63, 64, 65, so our average score is gonna be 63. So, you know, so hopefully with this coming year, we'll improve a little bit on meets or to masters. So any other questions here, Ms. Jackie?
No, just about that staff use tracker, we can start doing something with that once, once Dr. Ramos trains us on how to do that.
Okay, Coach Guerra? Okay, Mr. Ben Castillo?
No, sir.
Coach Serna?
Just on the, when meeting with the community or students, maybe we could split up and, you know, some of us may do community, others may do students.
That's, you know, that's the plan, especially because, like I said, it's in the evening. So in August, you know, two can go to one school, two can go to another schools, whatever, you know, and just present, and what I'll do, I have the time to a little presentation and then we just follow that presentation. Or I guess maybe Mrs. Sustaita and myself, because Mrs. Sustaita has done LSG before. We can sit together and kind of work a presentation.
And how would we keep track of that? Do we set up a time? Do we set up an agenda?
Yes, we'll have the agenda and so forth, so that way, and we'll put the time there of how long you presented, so that was, that way they'll give us the minutes for what we need for LSG, okay? Mr. Los Santos?
No, no questions.
Okay, so I'm gonna pass this around so you can sign it. And we'll continue to get better in this area. Dr. Rivera, anything else on that, LSG?
Go ahead.
All right, so let's continue. 8A1, discussion and possible action for the Board of Trustees to consider approval of the Lone Star Governance Board Management Report for June 2025.
Make the motion to approve.
On second?
So we have a motion by Mr. Castillo, second by Mrs. Sustaita, to approve the Lone Star Governance Monitoring Report for June 2025. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All against, motion carries. 8A2, approval to amend the LSG goal progress measures in the board monitoring calendar effective 2025, 2026 school year. Dr. Rivera?
Recommend approval.
Well, they're yours, so I'll make a motion to approve.
So I have a motion by Mr. Castillo, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Los Santos. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against?
No, I just wanna, I would have rather kept it the same and kept-
No, I just want to, I would have rather kept it the same and kept those expectations. So I'm going to go against this one.
Okay. All right, let's continue. Number nine, Wesco is the internal training auditing presentation. I know some of the board members had asked, had questions on this one, so.
We have to host the president.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Rivera and members of our community. My name is Rose, our president, I'm the internal auditor for Wesco ISD. And this evening, we're going to be just briefly going over a presentation that talks about the functionality of an internal audit. Also, we're going to go over the role of an internal auditor and then also the role of the board with regards to the same. So the first slide that we see here, we have the slide that covers the governance regarding an internal auditor. It makes reference to, it makes reference to board, board policy and also the Texas Education Code. Both the board policy and Texas Education Code say highlight the fact that the internal auditor does report directly to the, to the school board. And we'll see how this is important as the presentation progresses. The next slide makes mention of the primary purpose of an internal auditor. The internal auditor is responsible for planning, directing, implementing and implementing the district's internal audit function. The internal auditor is also carries a role to ensure compliance with accountability standards, laws, regulations and policies. Also, their internal auditor provides independent and objective appraisals of financial data processing and other relevant matters within the district. So now that we know what an internal auditor's purpose is, we go on to describing what an internal audit is. And this slide makes mention that an internal audit is a process that looks at an organization's operations. In this case, the organization being the school district. The second bullet point says it identifies potential areas of risk and the third bullet point says it makes recommendations for mitigation, for mitigating those risks from an independent lens and the key word there being independent. So we go on to the next slide. This slide asks the question, what is the school board's role in a district internal audit? So this information is coming directly from the Texas Association of School Boards, known as TASB, its acronym. And the first bullet point mentions that an internal audit may uncover districts weak spots, but their true value, but I mean, I'm sorry, that there's true value and it demonstrates the community that the school board is fulfilling its oversight function by enlisting independent and objective assessment of all school system operations and programs and identifying opportunities for improvement. The second point that it highlights is that the school board, according to TASB, an internal audit, it has an effective internal, okay, an effective internal audit can also protect school board members and administrators by addressing issues before they actually become headlines. All school district internal audits begin and end with a board, which both initiates internal audits and reviews the results. And then the fourth bullet point says an internal audit is a way for school boards to effectively execute their oversight responsibilities through an independent and objective lens. And those are the key words again, independent and objective. So what is the difference between an external audit and an internal audit? The first bullet point says an internal audit is designed to investigate the processes and systems of a district while an external financial audit tells you if your financial statements are accurate, an internal audit tells you if the processes and systems are working as they should be. An internal audit looks beyond the district's finances. It looks to the district's operations. Essentially, it looks into the guts of the school district with a higher level of rigor and scrutiny than an external audit. An internal audit takes a more holistic look at the many facets of a district's operation. These areas can include every aspect of a school system, including instructional programs. Areas that are higher on the list are those that have the higher risk to an organization, in this case to the school district. So the next slide says what should be included in an internal audit. One common misconception, this again is all coming from TASB, is that an internal audit should focus primarily on school activity funds. School activity funds make up less than 1% of a district's operating budget. In some internal audit functions, the other 99% is largely ignored, those being academic evaluations, operational evaluations, administrative evaluations. Determining what to audit can vary from district to district. It's generally driven by risks, but by what risks have been identified in a district. This risks include regulatory noncompliance, not achieving objectives and being inefficient among others. The next slide highlights that internal audits hold the district accountable and promote transparency. It demonstrates commitment to continuous improvement. Transparency is reinforced with internal audits. It provides district with an outside independent, third party assessment of the district's procedures and operational policies. And we see the word again there, independent. It is another accountability measure that helps the superintendent, the school board and the community know that the district is doing things the right way. So then what happens after an internal audit has been effectuated? The following slide says that following up on an internal audit and tracking the progress is incredibly important. There has to be follow up work that gets effectuated after an internal audit is done. You don't get the full value of an internal audit unless you do something with it. The next step is to put processes in place to track the progress of implementing any changes recommended in the internal audit report. Tracking the implementation increases the accountability of an organization. Boards can even call for a follow up audit and report back to the board audit committee within a agreed upon timeline. From initiating an audit to overseeing the audit process to monitoring an audit's results and implementation, it is the board's role to manage the internal audit function. Despite the work it requires, internal audits are not only worthwhile, but it's also essential to the governance process. And then lastly, the last slide talks about the ultimate goal, why we have to embrace an internal audit and their internal auditor. The ultimate goal is placing processes and systems in place that make the school business more efficient and effective for children. And that's what it's all about.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll start with Mr. Los Santos on the audit. Any particular questions at this time?
No, I think that you answered everything. I mean, the internal auditor in summary is just someone who can audit not only financials, but district operations as well, as long as it involves anything involving with policy and whatnot.
That's correct.
Okay. Coach Serna?
Just a comment. Can you review the board policies of Fort Worth, Dallas, maybe even Houston and El Paso, who all have like established internal auditors and see what kind of processes they have in place for the board to oversee the internal auditor?
I will.
I know the one from Fort Worth, they have a committee that's created by the board and internal audit. They have an audit committee meeting and that's where all those presentations are done and they even evaluate the internal auditor, right?
That is correct.
There's other folks that do it differently, but if you could bring something that works for us here in Weslaco, that'd be great as we, as we get into this internal auditor progress, process.
I will do that.
Mr. Los Santos?
I do have a question. So like he said, like, like, I agree with that 100%. Like, of course, look at other districts already have this in place, but what processes, I guess my question now, now that he's kind of struck something is what processes do we have in place to where you just don't go off on audits? Like, you know, you're not getting emailed consistently by like seven different people at the same time saying, hey, I want a full audit on this, 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 and this. Like, what type of limitations are there? Is it a board approved process or is it just anybody can pick up the phone and say, I want an audit on this, I want an audit on that? You talked about evaluations, staff evaluations, hiring processes, things like that. What kind of controls are there so that the audit, the internal auditor doesn't become kind of weaponized in a sense?
So in, in reference to that and looking at other districts, for example, our neighboring districts, one being McAllen, having communication with internal auditor there, they do have an audit committee that consists of three board members, the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, or whatever would be equivalent to them at their district and then the auditor. And then that committee then sets forth whatever plan they want to see get effectuated throughout the school year.
Depending on the request from a board member, whether it's appropriate or not appropriate, things like that.
Yes, and then depending on whatever happens, occurrences during the year, if there's something that needs to be audited, something that was an unforeseen occurrence, then the direction will go there and, but there is an internal audit plan.
Process.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Castillo.
Thank you. Coach Quay?
No.
Dr. Jaime?
Thank you.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Yes, as you were reading this, because I remember looking at this policy and our policy when I was taking a class on board policy. And when we hired you, I remember thinking, oh, okay, well, we get to pick the auditor, but I guess it was kind of like, you know, we left it up to the superintendent and we all agreed with him, whoever you recommend, we're good with. But as you're reading this and it says the board of trustees shall select or the internal auditor shall report directly to the board, then I was thinking, wait, we've never really, she hasn't directly reported to us because obviously, then I was thinking, wait, is she a full time employee or does she work here sometimes whenever an audit is done? But you're a full time employee, right? You do work for the district. So I, I was kind of, I'm glad you said, you showed us this because I wasn't sure how it worked. All I know is what you read, because that's what our policy states exactly what was put here. So I'm glad Mr. Castillo brought up the Fort Worth policy and Mr. De Los Santos, because we do want to have more of a operating procedure of how is this going to work and not just be throwing out, do this and do that. It wouldn't make sense. So I agree that we should kind of, you know, add that to, I don't, I didn't know what policy it was, I was looking for it right now, but there is one about the internal auditor. So we can go back and change that local policy to have some kind of operating procedure. But thank you very much for all you're doing. Appreciate it.
You brought it up a while back.
I did, yeah, but I wasn't sure. So I'm glad that, you know, the local policy is what the board can work on as a board. So we can set up those procedures.
Good point. Now, I have one question. What would be an example of an administrative evaluation audit? What would that entail? Like, I know, I know they do, the principals do evaluations or superintendents evaluations for that. What would, what would be a sample, an example of that?
So I think it really depends on what the audit committee wants to see. It could be, it just varies. It could be any number of things.
Because, you know, the only way that I think it would be if, if say, as an administrator or even as a teacher, when you get evaluated and you don't agree with the evaluation, you have certain number of days to request another evaluation. So I guess it all depends on, on situations, I guess, right?
Right, and a case by case and whatever it is that the board wants to see with respect to that. Yes.
Okay.
Like, if I could try and mineral that, that was my question too. When I started to cut on, like, I started to get the details, like the evaluations. I mean, I just don't think it's the board's role to go and contest unless there's some outcry or as part of a grievance, maybe exactly saying, hey, this administrator is not properly evaluating everyone, because that even happens, I mean, even in the military.
Right.
So you would be able to then say, I would see the board then saying, well, you know what, let's, let's evaluate then those individuals' evaluations because there's multiple grievances or issues or cases. But not, that was my kind of question. Where are the limitations where I just say, well, I want to see the, I want you to audit the evaluations of so and so, like, for no reason whatsoever.
It would be more the auditing of the evaluation process.
The processes.
Oh, not their findings.
It would be internal controls, processes and so forth.
Yeah. Good point.
Good point, Dr. Jaime. All right. Any other questions?
So right now, we're working, whatever Dr. Rivera is telling you, like, you know, work on this, that's what you're doing right now, right?
Yes, it is.
Now, since we're all seven here, unless you have a concern or something, you can ask me and then I can direct it to Dr. Rivera or I can call her and say whatever the question might be, you know, dealing with, maybe you, you had some concern, like say student activity, prime example. If somebody says, hey, you know, at this campus, the student activity, they're doing it this way, this way, this way, whatever, I don't think that's the right process. Then you can ask me and I could ask her. Can you do an audit on that because it's student activity?
Right.
So it all depends on whatever the question might be.
You have the authority yourself as board president to ask her. Okay.
Okay?
I totally do the committees.
Right.
I think you have a committee made up of three individuals that, you know, balanced.
Right.
And then that way, yeah, for now, I mean, for now, I don't expect to ask for any.
Maybe we can have that agenda item and the next time we need to kind of have a.
In August?
Yeah.
Okay. And follow up with Dr. Rivera on that.
And may I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
With respect to the fact that this is the first year, the full year of this full school year is what I'm making reference to, I think it would be probably prudent to approach the school year in phases, just refining manuals, refining, refining processes, internal controls and start sharpening the saw, to use the same analogy that you used earlier. And before we start dissect, dissecting everything and auditing, you know, whatever is coming our way, just refining and really polishing everything.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else I have to put on that? All right, let's continue. Thank you, Mrs. We go to item 10, consent items. I'll give you a minute. I know some of you have already looked through the consent agenda items and then we'll discuss whichever ones you want to pull from the consent items. So let's start with. Mrs. Sustaita?
No.
Okay. Dr. Jaime?
No, sir.
Coach Quay?
I have none.
You have none. Okay, Mr. Castillo?
I have one, sir. 10 J 7A.
10 J 7A. Okay. Mr. Serna? No? Okay, Mr. Los Santos?
Uh, no.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda except for 10 J 7A?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime, second by Coach Quay to approve the consent agenda except for 10 J 7. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go to 10 J 7A, approval, proposal award of the Wesco Independent School District Student Athletic and Accident Insurance, RFP 250554. Dr. Rivera or?
Before I could ask my question?
Or Mr. Castillo?
So, Mr. Nato, thank you for allowing me to pull this out and I had given you a heads up before that I wasn't going to pull it out just so we wouldn't blindside you or Dr. Rivera. So, yeah, I mean, I see the top three rankings. The third one is our current incumbent. The second one is a former incumbent and the first ranked is a brand new, you know, somebody who's never worked with Weslaco ISD and they've been, they've been doing, they've been in the student athletic insurance business per se for the last two years. So that's only my, that's my only concern that the, it seems like, and this is not a bad thing, right, that we're recommending based on price. But last year, when I had this conversation.
It's a very good observation. I want to make sure staff is aware of what they're recommending.
Yes, sir. And so.
Quality over care, I think.
So I believe we have, Coach Schromen, you were in the committee, correct? Who else was in the committee? Mr. Freddie?
Yeah.
Brown. Travis Law.
Okay, so Coach Schromen and Freddie come up to the podium so that way, if anybody has any questions they can ask and we'll start with, of course, Mr. Castillo, since you pulled that item up.
Yeah, so I guess would we be okay with number two?
Actually, all three are good, right? We, the only difference was going to be the cost and the locked in cost for the second year that we have with insurance.
Well, when you're a new company, you're pretty aggressive on price. I mean, I could tell you that as a vendor.
Just to clarify, Mr. Castillo, the years of service?
They said in the RFP, they've been in business for 34 years.
Yeah, they have, so I know these folks, it's two folks, right? It's a sponsor and then some other local person. And so they've been in the prevention of accident insurance for, or not insurance, but prevention of accident for 30 plus years, but student athletic insurance, it's been pretty recent for two years. So.
They, I can tell you that they have, at least from the RFP, answers 203. They, I can tell you that they have, at least from the RFP, answers 203 districts that they're currently working with, provide this insurance benefit.
How many in the Valley?
Six in the Valley.
And the second ranked?
Ten in the Valley.
So, more?
Four more.
Okay.
Which one is the second ranked? Is it the...
SIP?
SIP.
So, that's just my only concern. I would, me, I statement, I would like to go with the second ranked, just because they have a proven track history with the district, if we're not going to go with the incumbent, and so, that's just my opinion.
What's, going back to, I'm sorry, going back to answer your question, right, all three, you know, we've been happy, well, the two previous, we've been happy with.
So, we have two right now, number two? The ones doing the work right now is number two?
No, three. No, number three.
Number three.
Do you use number two before me?
Yes, sir, we have.
What's the difference in the cost?
From first to two, I believe, was 16,000.
Yes, sir, and over two years, because we have a rate guarantee, that's 32,000, if we go with the highest ranked by committee.
Correct.
On top of that, we have no rate guarantee with our number two ranked, and they've told us that it won't go any higher than 3.5, the first renewal, and up to 5%. So, really, the savings, if we go with the top ranked, is between 32 over two years to $42,000 in savings, because we have that rate guarantee.
Right.
And everything else, to use your terms, is the Cadillac plan. We want to make sure that our students are going to be taken care of, that our parents are going to be taken care of, and also the providers that work with those families, and work with the students that might get injured, are being taken care of.
That's what I was going to, you know, go back to, Tony, you're the ones that are on the field, working with those youngsters, and having to deal with injuries, and anytime we have ACLs or anything like that. So, we're going to be taken care of with that. We don't have to worry about not paying, not taking care of our youngsters, because that's my primary concern.
We checked out the district's that have that policy, and carry the other policies. We checked all three of them out, and they all came back with positive reviews, and that's the questions we asked, like, are your doctors paid? Are your benefits paid out? Zero-balance budget, how's all that work? And everything came back good.
So, for all three? We don't have any issues with any one of them. The plan that we carry here at Wes Le Quois ISD is probably one of the best plans that we have in regards to benefits. So, all three of them are going to be giving out the same benefits. It just all came down to cost. And at the end of the day, we want what's best for our parents, we want what's best for our kids.
That's what I want.
You know, that's, and it takes a lot of work as the trainers, to be able to build that network, the relationship. We're the ones that call the doctors, we're the ones that call the parents, we're the ones that call the physicians, to make it work, you know? So, either one of those companies, we can make it work, but it's going to come down to the cost. So, whether it's the highest cost, the middle cost, or who we have, is going to come down to us to make it work. And I don't think, in regards to which company it is, it's going to come down to us to make it work.
Forget the cost. Who's going to give us the best service?
In my opinion, I would stay, if it's not going to come with cost, I'd stay with who we have, in my opinion.
I think at the end of the day...
At the end of the day, I'd stay with who we have.
Who is it we have right now?
The third ranked.
Okay.
Their proven record, they've been with us for 10 years, I've been here six. That's my professional opinion. If it's not going to come down to cost.
My question, if you said 10 versus six, right, 10, SIP has 10, and you said the other, can you tell me, just based on the size of the district, can you tell me what 10, the other, SIP has and six that the Cover Game has? Just to rank...
Cover Game has Hardin. Hardin is similar to what we do, right?
But do you have, like, can you, like, tell me, it's like, I hear them all, like, do you have them there?
What, that I know is Hardin and La Feria?
We don't have all of them, per se, but I can tell you a couple that were brought up, I'll have to look them up. I know they're up in Judson, also Southwest ISD in San Antonio, Hardin, Refugio, that's Cover Game.
Okay.
So, we reached out to them, they have no issues with them.
What about SIP? Who does SIP have, that 10 here in the Valley?
SIP has Bronzo, Sherelan.
Sherelan?
Yes, and I believe Mercedes.
Mercedes.
Yes.
I think I'd go, like, for me, I would rather, like...
Student safety being the priority and the key, and service that you know that's already tried and true. We've used SIP already before, and I think...
We're...
I'd like to...
We're not going to be going to two companies, if we leave who we're with, who we don't have a track record of, in regards.
So, which company are you recommending? The one that we're currently with?
If it has no issue with money, with who we have right now.
And who was that, did you say?
Student insurance.
And Coach Brown and Coach Schromen, you're okay with that? You're a part of the committee?
All right. Because, you know, you know that you've got work to do, but you depend on these men right here. Freddie, you have to deal with everything, too.
Okay.
Why do we want to fix something that ain't broke? That's my thing. Why do we want to fix something that ain't broke?
I'll second.
No, they're recommending...
Oh, this is student insurance.
Our incumbent, our current...
Texas Insurance.
That's who we have.
But we've also done work with number two, we've also done work with number two also before. Okay, so, currently, we have who?
The third ranked.
Texas Insurance Plan.
Which they were kind of way out of the...
They're the number three.
Okay.
They're the most expensive one, yeah.
Yes, okay.
So, I'm trying to get the middle.
So, right, yeah, SIP's the middle, because we've already used it before, it's tried and true, and we still have a cost savings.
And sometimes I'm thinking, like, HVAC, a veces lo barato sale mas caro.
And Dr. Vivera, you're right? Okay, so, thank you, gentlemen. I think that's a question?
So, I made the motion for SIP, sir, the second ranked.
Second. So, we have a motion by Mr. Castillo, second by Mr. De Los Santos, to go with the...
SIPs.
SIPs?
With who we have currently?
No, sir. Yes, we've used them before, and they're in the middle, so we're still saving money.
Yes.
Somebody we've used that tried and true.
Well, I don't want to compromise student safety and...
Well, they recommended it, too.
Okay.
Yeah, they recommended it as well.
We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's continue. 11A, discussion items, update on trainings, conferences, events, and consider future agenda item requested by the Board of Trustees. Dr. Vivera?
Yes, no meeting in July, but we'll have a special meeting if something comes up, sometime during July.
All right. So...
Right now, there's no scheduled meeting.
So, Mr. De Los Santos, no, I know you have brought this up, to have a July board meeting, but if we have to have one...
No, I don't think we need one right now.
Okay.
He says we don't need one, yeah.
Okay, but in case we need it?
A special board meeting, prior to your lunch.
Okay, all right.
If something, yeah, something comes up.
Okay. Number 12, discussion of possible action, discussion of possible action for the board to endorse a nominated individual from another school board within our TASB district to fill a position on the TASB Board of Directors position B.
I think the name, the name that came out was Sylvia Sanchez.
Yeah.
Sylvia Sanchez Garcia.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second that.
So, we have a motion from Coach Kuehler, and a second by Mrs. Sustaita, to recommend Dr. Sylvia Sanchez, correct?
Garza.
Yes, for Dr. Sylvia Sanchez Garza, TASB Region 1, South Texas ISD. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's continue. 12B, discussion of possible action for the Board of Trustees to approve the final amended budgets for the general fund and the debt fund, a service fund for the fiscal year 2425. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. David?
Oh, okay.
This is what y'all presented on, right? As a public...
Yes, it's the final amended budget, though.
I move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is an amendment.
And so, the way to do it is... It's our last chance to make any moves of the current budget, so that that's the, to kind of make, ensure that we don't have any negatives.
I move to approve.
We have a motion, Dr. Jaime? I have a second by Mr. De Los Santos? Second by Mr. De Los Santos? Any discussion?
No, just to clarify, just what you said, but so everybody can understand, it's just, yeah, you're just going to move monies from all your codes, and then clear out negatives, and then pour it all back into the general fund, and send back what we don't use, if it needs to get sent back.
And if we don't, the auditor will...
Yes, we'll find out.
...think this for it.
That is correct. It is one of the things that TA and our external auditors look at.
See. Okay. Did I already motion? Did I?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, we're good. All right, 12B2, discussion.
Let me vote, let me vote.
Well, that's what I asked, I said...
No, we have a motion.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
There we go.
Brain freeze there, real quick. 12B2, discussion of possible action for the Board of Trustees to approve the adoption of the district general fund and debt service fund budget for the fiscal year 2526, to include the 2526 compensation plan. Dr. Vivera?
Recommend the group?
Mr. Board Trust Group. Mr. Kuehler, if I could, could you include Dr. Vivera in that increase in the compensation plan for administrators?
Yes. And do you agree there'll be 4%, like we did everybody else?
Yeah, that's what, that was what I would like for the motion to be, to include him, so we don't have to bring him back.
Absolutely.
Okay, so who made the motion?
I did.
Dr. Kuehler, we have a second?
Yes. The here, the second.
Mr. Castillo, including the 4% for Dr. Vivera. You're okay with that, Dr. Vivera?
Yes, thank you, guys.
All right.
If...
Any other discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. 12B3, discussion of possible action for the Board of Trustees to consider approval to renew and extend the contract for ambulance services with First Care EMS of Wesaco, or to approve a release for, release a request for bids and proposals for ambulance services. Dr. Vivera?
Recommend to extend?
So move.
Second. So, we have a motion by Mr. Ben Castillo, second by Mr. De Los Santos? Any discussion?
And it's one year.
For one year?
Ten, for one more year.
Right.
Okay, for one year. Any discussion? No?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along. We're close meeting. Personal matters, 13A1, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation of contracts for certified personnel, non-certified professional, and non-contractual personnel. 13A2, discussion regarding reassignments, retirements, retirements of a certified professional, non-certified professional, and non-contractual personnel. 13A3, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation for the position of principal Mary Hope Middle School, and discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation for the position of principal for Rudy Silva. 13B, consultation with attorney pending a contemplated litigation, settlement offer of matter which is duty of the attorney of the Westco Independent School District under the Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct at the State Board. Can I finish? Carlos, can I finish? Thank you. And of course, the board, too.
I'm sorry, sir.
No problem. All right, unless, you know what, next time, I'm going to have you all read it, and I'm going to walk out.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I'm, okay, so, discussion, consultation, deliberation regarding waiver of attorney-client communication privilege for limited purpose, as requested by Mrs. Chekki Sustaita. All right, it is 8:46, and we will go into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is 9:27. We recommend in open meeting possible action if necessary and items discussed in closed meeting. 14A, discussions possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation of contracts for certified professional, non-certified professional and non-contractual personnel. Dr. Ibera.
Recommend, Mr. Lo Santos?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Los Santos.
Second by Coach Quer.
To approve...
Can we do A1 and A2, Mr. Board President, all at once?
Resignation to retirements?
Yes, sir.
We can combine them.
Yeah, that's okay.
Mr. Los Santos, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
And Coach Quer?
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. 14A3, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation for the position of principal for Mary Hope Middle School. Dr. Ibera.
Yes, we had five very good applicants. They're all high quality, but I'm recommending Lisa McCandless to be the principal at Mary Hope.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime, second by Mr. Coach Quer.
Okay.
Okay, point of Mr. Los Santos. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. You want to introduce Mr. Lo Santos?
Congratulations.
Mr. McCrallys, just like I did other board meetings, I'll start with Mr. Los Santos. You want to, I don't know if you know her, but just to congratulate her.
No, I don't know you, but I've heard a lot about you, especially from this man right here. But, yeah, you come with a very good reputation and I want to wish you the best of luck and especially a very successful '25-'26 school year for yourself, your staff, the students and the parents there at Mary Hope, and I wish you all the best and I know you're going to do a great job. Yes, ma'am.
Coach Serna?
Yes, Ms. McCandless, so proud of you and happy that you're in that position. Congratulations.
Mr. Castillo?
Same. I've never had the opportunity of meeting you, but you saw the data earlier and so let's get to work and congratulations.
Coach Quer?
Congratulations.
Dr. Jaime?
Same, congratulations, you know, well wishes and like I said to Mr. Ranelas, you know, careful what you ask for, right? Good luck, good luck.
Mr. Mrs. Sustaita?
Yeah, it's just like Mr. Castillo said, you know, that you saw the scores earlier, so you know that you have a good work to do, but I'm sure you're going to do great and I was just thinking right now, we have four middle schools and we have four female principals, so I'm like, yeah! So congratulations, ma'am, you know, the other ladies have done a great job also, so I'm sure you will too.
And Ms. McCrallys, congratulations, just like everybody said, I had the opportunity to be there at Mary Hope, so a lot of those parents, a lot of those students were, you know, were there, so wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Dr. Castillo, for trusting me and the opportunity to serve at Mary Hope. I want to share you that all the decisions I make are always going to be in the best interest of students, staff, and especially the district as well. So, thank you so much.
Good. And again, you had good guidance there with Ms. Morales there and of course with all your help and everybody else, hope they, you all received an A. So if you have any questions or anything, Ms. Morales can guide you, especially now in the position that she's in. All right.
It's a special place at Mary Hope.
Thank you. 14A4, discussion of possible action for superintendent's recommendation for the position of principal for Rudy Silva Elementary School. Dr. Ibera.
Yes, had four very good applicants. They're all good, but I'm recommending Claudia Martinez.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Los Santos, second by Mrs. Sustaita for their approval. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. You want to introduce her? Introduce her.
And again, I'll ask Mrs. Sustaita, any congratulations?
Yes, Ms. Martinez is a familiar face to the board, you know, she's presented to us before, she was in charge of the advanced academics and we know you've done a great job in your former position and you were already overseeing Silva, so I know you're going to do a great job. I'm very excited for the staff and just wishing you the best. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Jaime?
Good luck and we're here to support you. Congratulations.
Coach Quer?
Exactly, you know, we're here to support and congratulate both of you all. Enjoy the evening and then, you know, you know what's ahead, so focus and I know you're going to use the summer to get ready for a lot of things, but take a little time to smell the roses, sharpen the saw and let's get after it.
Mr. Castillo?
Same, congratulations. Again, you saw the data, there was increase, but you saw it, so can't wait for y'all to get back to work and and continue that progress that's there. Congratulations.
Coach Serna?
Congratulations, Ms. Martinez. Best of luck and we're here to support you.
Mr. Los Santos?
Congratulations, ma'am, and I know that that campus and those students and staff and those parents and that whole community as a whole is in great hands, so I wish you all the best, both of you.
And again, congratulations again. I believe one of my grandnieces is there and she's very verbal, but she's she's, I want to say she's a second She's a... I want to say she's a second grader, maybe, but she says she'll tell you exactly what she needs or she wants and what the student needs, you know, that's the way she is. So anyway, all right, congratulations again.
Thank you, Dr. Ibera, for putting me in this position to begin with. It was a wonderful reminder of my passion for being back on the campus and so I am still looking forward to this opportunity. We are on our way to an A. Thank you for your trust.
Thank you.
14A5, the discussion of possible action regarding waiver of attorney-client communication privilege for limited purpose as requested by Mrs. Sustaita.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion by Sustaita, second by Mr. Los Santos.
As discussed in closed session for the limited purpose.
As discussed in closed session. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Acknowledged, now you may stand.
So...